Mic check. Okay, here we go. We try to run a tight operation around here. Good evening, Milpitas. I'm your 2025 Board President, Chris Norwood. Welcome to the meeting of the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education. We appreciate your attendance, our participation in our educational proceedings which align with the guidelines set forth by the Ralph M. Brown Act for Open Meetings. Tune into our hybrid-style board meeting, online, or either Zoom, or YouTube, or in person, inside our boardroom here at the Round the World Languages Schools. Tonight, we have a joint session with the San Jose City Evergreen Community College District, woo-woo, before our regular open session. Public comments can be made while you are logged on to Zoom, or if you are in person. YouTube, however, is a listen-only option. If you're unable to do either of these, please visit our written public comment webpage for instruction on how to submit your written public comment. One public comment per person. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Board trustee, no.
Here.
Board trustee, Dr. Nakka.
Here.
Board trustee, Jung.
Here.
Vice President, Yipchuan.
Here.
Board President, Norwood, here. Our student board reps will be joining us in the open session. Now, at this point... President Alexander, have you done your roll call and all that stuff as well? Okay. So, we have a motion to approve the open session agenda. A motion to approve the open session agenda.
Motion.
We have a motion to approve the open session agenda. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none, motion carries.
Good afternoon. Oh, there you go. Thank you. You guys deserve more sophisticated than I do.
Oh, here we go.
Okay, good evening, and I'd like to welcome those that are here on behalf of the San Jose Evergreen Community College Board. We'll go ahead and open up the session with our colleagues from Milpitas, so it's now open. And do you need roll call for us, or you just see that we're all here? Good? Okay. I guess we can do the same thing. We are recognizing the agenda that we have here, and allow us for a motion to approve this agenda as stated by our President Norwood. All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Okay, motion carries. Any abstentions? Nope, got it. All right, we're good, and we'll go ahead and turn it over back to President Norwood.
Thank you, President Alexander. We are now on item nine, SJECCD-MUSD Joint Session Update. SJECCD Extension Community Services District Support Dual Enrollment and Middle College High School.
Welcome, folks.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. We're happy to be here at this joint board meeting to discuss our partnership. So today, for those of you who I haven't met, my name is Zalmawan, and I serve as the Director for the College Extension for San Jose City College. And I'm going to be presenting today with my colleague.
Hello, my name is Carissa Scott, and I am the Principal of the Middle College High School and Dual Enrollment Coordinator for Milpitas. Thank you for having us.
Mariposa Christian, Vice President Strategic Partnership and Workforce Innovations. Thank you.
All right, so to begin with, just to give you a brief overview of our partnership. So, we have a great collaboration between the San Jose Evergreen Community College District and...
So, just for those that are in the audience, we are showing the presentation to your left. So could you please let them know as you go through? That'd be great. Thank you.
Let them know as we go to the next slide.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah. So again, discussing our collaboration between the San Jose Community College District and Evergreen Community College District and the Milpitas Unified School District. It's a model for leveraging shared resources. And so what that looks like at the extension is offering high school classes in the mornings, and then in the afternoons, offering college classes. We also offer accessible academic support, as well as admissions and financial aid assistance, and advising and counseling. So, we address student support, and we work together to ensure that our students' needs are being met. And we meet regularly to evaluate and align our efforts. We do this intentionally through our early alert and case management systems. And we offer community-building opportunities for our students, as well as skill-building and leadership development, tutoring and academic resources. And we plan cultural events and engagements for our students as well. So, we maintain a culture of belonging for our students, and we do this by providing mentorship, as well as opportunities for peer mentorships for our students. We try to involve the student voice in our decision-making when possible, and again, offering leadership opportunities for our students when available. And we work together to maintain an inclusive environment for all at the extension. Next slide, please. So, the extension came to be through a shared vision of our districts, one in which we combine our resources to secure the success and support for our students. We reinforce the foundation of our partnership through joint committees to ensure transparency, sustainability, and alignment. We include key voices from our districts to construct, measure, and evaluate our shared work. So specifically, we do this through two committees, the first being our Educational Planning Committee. So this committee is charged with reviewing the pathways that we offer for our students, as well as the courses within those pathways. So on that committee, we have, through Milpitas Unified, our Executive Director of Learning and Innovation, Breezy Johari. We also have Principal Scott, as well as Valerie Lamb, who is a high school counselor. And then on the SJCC side, we have Rene Alvarez, our Dean of Student Equity and Academic Support, as well as myself. And in our next fall semester, we will have a college counselor as well on the committee. And in our other committee, the Operations Planning, Operations Committee, that is charged with developing an operational agreement between our districts, and ensuring equitable management of our shared resources. So on that committee, we have, in Milpitas Unified District, Dorothy Reconose, the Chief Business Officer, Chin Song, Director of Technology, Technology Services, also Principal Scott. And then for San Jose City College, we have myself, we have Chris Hawken, our Vice President of Admin Services, and Brittany Shannon, who serves as a program coordinator at the extension. The scope of these committees is meant to directly benefit our students by providing seamless educational pathways and management over our shared resources. Next slide, please. So, as educational institutions, our visions and values do intersect quite often. I just wanted to highlight a few strategic priorities at our district levels that align. So one being student-centered approaches. Both of our districts focus on pathways that prepare students for future careers in higher and higher education. We have holistic support systems, and we share a commitment to academic, social, and emotional growth through personalized services. Additionally, community and communication, both prioritize engaging key stakeholders to strengthen student outcomes. Next slide, please. All right, so building a college-going identity. So we want our students to see themselves as college students, but we also hope that eventually they see themselves as college students at San Jose City College. So one way that we go about this goal is organizing field trips from the extension to San Jose City College. So these visits help students build a meaningful connection to the campus. It helps, gives them an opportunity to interact with other students as we do student-led tours. They also have opportunities to see on campus, you know, where would their classes be? They can see inside of a classroom. Sometimes they can meet with faculty coordinators. So it gives them that opportunity to just build connection. Beyond academics, it's about securing a sense of belonging for them as well. And just making sure that they feel confident and supported during that transition from high school to college. And it also provides an opportunity for early exposure to student resources, so that when they find themselves on a college campus or San Jose City College, and if they ever find themselves in need of student support, they know what programs exist and what opportunities are available. So just giving them that extra push that they might need to access those. So these experiences are meant to make college feel real and attainable for our students, and just to give them the opportunity to see college as part of their future. Okay, and next slide, please. And with that, I'm going to pass it over.
Okay, so we also want to speak to another joint vision that we have, which is to use dual enrollment not as just an enrollment strategy, but an equity strategy. Making sure that the students who need access to these resources the most have them. And so, to that end, we've expanded our dual enrollment offerings to include an English language development course that's offered on the MHS campus, specifically to our English language learners. We also have been very strategic in recruiting our first-generation families to join us at both the Innovation Campus and at the College Extension Campus, so that they have access to this extra college support that is so valuable.
Carissa, you're referring to the Middle College High School, correct?
I am.
Milpitas Middle College High School.
Yes.
Okay.
Milpitas Middle College High School. I'm also referencing the Innovation Campus, which is part of the MHS Extension at the Innovation Campus, because that's also a goal there.
Yeah, so we live in that space, but there's probably a number of folks in here that don't even know what the Middle College... And we haven't had a joint meeting in a while, and there's a lot of new faces, so they may not even be familiar with what the Milpitas Middle College High School is at all.
Please come visit us. We would love to have you. The Extension Campus is a humming hub of a lot of learning, a lot of innovation, a ton of collaboration, and just incredible student outcomes. So we'd love to have you come join us. I would love to do a whole presentation just on the Middle College High School, but I... Maybe I... No, in the interest of time, we'll keep moving forward with this formal presentation, but in the future, I'd love to do that. But we do have two new opportunities for our high school students. One is the Milpitas Middle College High School that is held there at the Extension Campus. The second is a recent opening this school year of our Innovation Campus, which is where a part of our Milpitas Extension is housed, and that's an engineering-focused school. And we're going to be talking more about that in just a little bit. So we also want to make sure that our students who would benefit the most have access to the Milpitas Middle College High School. And now, as we continue to expand at the Middle College High School, we have over 50% of our students meeting the Title I designation. So that means that these are students who would benefit the most from additional resources have access to them, and we're really proud of that. And we're proud of the success rates that we've been able to maintain that will be referenced soon. Another thing that is just an incredible aspect of the Milpitas Middle College High School and the dual enrollment programming is the power of expectation. These students are treated like the young adults they are and the college students they are. We have very high expectations for their engagement. And we couple those high expectations with a broad amount of support, research-based support, that has been effective in them meeting... research-based support that has been effective in them meeting their goals. We also jointly provide clear boundaries and guidance for these young people as they expand their horizons. Next slide, please. We, on this slide, I'd like to point out some of the success rates that we've had. So you can see in the top right corner there, you see the percentage of successful completion of college courses. This means they earn to see or hire in these college courses. Since the conception of our dual enrollment programming, due to our, the joint effort of both of our organizations, our students have maintained over a 90% success rate. I think there's one anomaly there where we dipped to 88, but most recently, we were at 98%, which is much higher than you will see across the state and really the nation with regard to dual enrollment success rates. And this, and keeping in mind that this includes, you know, expanding to 10th grade this year. So we put a lot of challenges before our students and they have risen to the occasion. Another thing I'd like to point out is the incorporation of student voice that Director Awon alluded to. And you're going to get that live and direct in just a moment as we have a couple of students share their experience with you. But you can see here, our most recent survey that we gave out in January, we had 211 responders. And those, over 98% of the students felt that their experience in this dual enrollment programming had them much more well-prepared for what college had in store for them. So that's our goal, we love to see that. Another thing that some of our stakeholders on the college side might be interested to know is that over 60% of our dual enrollment students identified that they plan to go to community college full-time when they graduate. And when we asked them which local community college they plan to attend, the overwhelming majority identified SJCC and EBC as their plan. And that's a direct result of receiving the services that they're getting now as high school students. The last thing I'd like to point out on this slide is just the, the very strategic expansion. So we started with 30 students and one general education pathway in 2021. And since then, we have now expanded to include an education social work pathway, computer science pathway, and also health sciences pathway at the Middle College. And those are all very collaboratively crafted pathways that result in very clear goals for the students. So they are on their path to their eventual career that they're, they're working towards. We also have expanded from those original 30 students to 265 this spring. And we look forward to offering this to more of our students in the future.
Hey, Carissa, just one more outcome. Do you keep track of the students who actually, you've had some graduation classes now. Do we have a way to keep track of that, that alumni and having them provide you feedback as to what their experience was and how that, that affected their current college enrollment?
Yeah, great question. So we do have a pre-graduation questionnaire that we give to all of our seniors before they graduate. And so we have personal emails for all of those students and we do keep in touch with them. I still, I want to host an alumni dinner or something to get everybody back together. But that's a really good idea to think about some strategic data points that we might want to get back from them, so.
Right.
It's a good idea.
Just for my colleagues from San Jose, our, our practice is when, when we hear something that inspires us to ask a question, we just dive right in, so.
Lastly, just to go over some opportunities that exist in the future, expanding our educational offerings. We have some new pathways. We're going to be speaking about a new pathway with EBC that we're building for fall in just a few moments. We are looking at making sure that these pathways are living pathways, right? We need to be responsive to ongoing legislative changes that come up. We need to be responsive to industry need. And I think most importantly, being responsive to our stakeholders, the students and their families, who really help us to guide and determine what we are offering. We also are really looking to just continue to strengthen the collaboration. I want to give a shout out to Director Awon for really institutionalizing these committees that were always part of our joint-use agreement. But it's really been under his leadership that we've started implementing these. And I, I think it's been a great opportunity for different levels of leadership to voice their perspective and for us to have like the vision and the implementation come together. And we've had some great outcomes from that. So looking forward, just continuing to look at innovative initiatives surrounding ways for us to leverage our resources, which sometimes get a little tight, right? But to make sure that that's, that we're maximizing the efficiency of those and that we're able to offer the most opportunities to the, to the largest number of students who need access the most. So I would like now to invite Dr.
Before you go, Carissa.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
You touched on the outreach component of it and mentioned first gen. Can you speak a little bit more about your recruitment, how you, you know, do you build partnerships with community-based organizations to identify students? Or how does that work?
Yeah, sure. So in the K-12 realm, we have a few different ways that we collaborate around making sure that our students and our families have information about what's available to them. So one thing that we do is we leverage our community liaisons who, we have a Latino and Vietnamese liaison who work with our families. And we've been able to offer some different workshops in those languages to make sure that our families are informed about what's available. We also, the students are our biggest advocates. I mean, you guys will hear in a minute, they're just amazing. And so takes, taking students over to tell their peers about this. We really look at, okay, which classes have the higher percentage of English language learners? Where can we go in and make sure that we're giving this information out? We also, as a district, we do keep track of the parent education levels. And so we're aware of our students who are first-generation students and we can be very intentional about inviting them to some of the community information sessions. Those are just some of the ways that we make sure that we're.
Thank you. The, the other question I have is around, it sounds like the students are in your program or our program are very much supported. Are there also support for their parents and family in terms of the engagement of this program?
I think that's an area of growth for us. I will say, yes, they are engaged. We have a nice, strong PTO with the Middle College that we started this year. And we do regularly invite the families to be part of it. It's a little bit dicey, right? Because in the K-12 realm, the parents are the Ed Rights holders. And when we move into college, the students really are the Ed Rights holders of that information due to FERPA. So, but helping our families understand how to navigate that, how to support their students and how to access that for themselves is an area that I think we could do more work with at the extension.
And then I would ask the question, are, in San Jose City quest for the certain type of students, is there, is there an emerging parent component in the work?
Yeah, I, I'm particularly interested in our dual enrollment students. And this is something, we received a report in our last board meeting about that. And I think it's critical, especially if you're talking about recruiting students who are first generation. It's helping the parents to learn that process, but also parents can be a student of ours in our system. And so how do we not only support the student, but also an opportunity to recruit their parents to engage in our program at the community college level? And that's what I'm striving for.
So, so I guess you're talking about the partnership of the, the parents of the students. Do we have any data of them being actively engaged to be students at San Jose City Evergreen Community College District?
For that one, yeah. For that one, we do partner with Milpitas Adult School.
So that we are able to collect that data, but not on this side of the dual enrollment, but we can go look into it, yes.
But just, sorry, just to follow up on that. But, I mean, you, you, okay, so there's, there's a stream of students coming in certainly from our dual enrollment. But as a city college, you guys have a stream of students that you also, I'm assuming have classes at the, at the extension, right?
Yes. So after 3:00 PM, we can offer concurrent enrollment classes.
Right, so, so there, so there's, I'm trying to translate that. That means you guys have some sort of recruitment process to get more students into the, the city college itself. Is that true?
So we have a marketing team that does recruitment, so I don't know.
Yeah, so we don't have a specific outreach for the Milpitas Extension for our regular traditional courses, pathway. Not yet, but we were working through our adult education partner because we also have a funding, different funding stream. And they're also looking for dual enrollment for that adult partner. But we have not explore, but we will explore about the first-generation parents being possible to our pathways to us.
Well, let me suggest, it's not only first generation, right? We, we have a lot of community members, we have seniors who are looking for opportunities, right? It seems like that's the area that, that could be a tremendous opportunity for both of us to have those classes for our adult population who may not be necess, I mean, it's great for dual enrollment. Don't get me wrong, I love dual enrollment, but there is this other population that I, I think we, we have a opportunity to explore, right?
And I appreciate Moni's words about saying that, because this is our first meeting in a while? And, you know, we're, we're recalibrating and again, we, we're all still feeling some of the losses of, of your leadership and continued condolences for that. So now that we're getting back on track, we're recognizing that the adult piece, not only from our Middle College High School is possible candidates, but also through their relationship with adult education and then also with the community as well is a... So I guess at some point, we'll start to see a budget around those types of things.
Yes, we were working with our Milpitas Unified Adult School Partners, yes.
Awesome.
I have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, so one is that it would be helpful just to know, what is the capacity on your sites? Both at the extension, the one that's across the street, and then the new expansion that I think just, yeah, the innovation? If you can answer that one question, and I do have a couple of others.
Yeah, in terms of the room capacity at the extension?
Yeah, because you said you had 267 students, if I'm not mistaken?
So not all at the, at the SJCC Extension Campus. So that includes the students who are currently in our engineering pathway that we have with SJCC at the Innovation Campus. That includes the students who are the English language learner students who are on the main MHS campus and the students at the Middle College in dual enrollment at the extension. So the extension capacity, I think probably Director Awon knows the exact number, but I would, I would estimate that it's about 250 students, 300 students?
It's about between those two. So I can get to those exact numbers. It varies based off of our classrooms and how we're using the space, because some of our classrooms have collapsible walls. But about those numbers, between 250 and 300.
I wouldn't say it could be more than that. And then in terms of the Innovation Campus, would we say 500? Yeah, about 500 students.
And the reason for my question was is that for us, maybe to possibly consider some combined grants. And then also just in, in with that is that wondering if some of your teachers who may have masters, right? If they can assist in some of those, those gaps? Just wanted to ask that. And then also, as far as you mentioned, students are being informed in, in dual enrollment. Can you kind of walk me through a little bit of what that kind of looks like? And there's a reason why I'm asking and I will ask that question after.
Do you mean with regard to onboarding our new dual enrollment students?
No, like, how are they informed? Like, how are they informed that this program exists?
Okay, yeah, good question. So when, at first, when we first started offering it, we had to do a lot of marketing, a lot of outreach. So we would go every Wednesday of the fall semester. Basically, I take a group of students over to present in MHS classrooms. We also have regular community info session and parent information nights that we host. Now, this year, we are, we have way more students who are interested than we have space in our dual enrollment programming, which is a great problem to have, but we definitely have that increased interest. And so this year, we had our college, our high school counselors go into the classrooms and inform the students when they were doing their course selections about opportunities for outside, what they consider outside credits. And so they will give information about dual enrollment and there is a webpage dedicated to that and also a form that is available to them for them to indicate their interest. And so that's how they sign up.
Thank you for that. And also, I just want to ask.
Could you flip the video? Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. Just to add to that additionally, so we have an admissions and records representative onsite from San Jose City College and they also do outreach for the extension. And to the point of one of the questions earlier about serving populations that speak other languages, we do also work with our colleagues at City College to make sure that we are offering those workshops in Spanish and other languages as well when possible.
And so my last question, more so as a comment, just, has there been any consideration for informing families? Number one, like, new families who are just coming to our area? And number two, starting from the elementary level and up? Just because I think with one of the other colleagues here from the other board happened to mention about, you know, expanding it to others, you know, grandparents and so on and so forth. Some grandparents actually walk, watch, you know, their grandchildren and bring them to school and attend family or engagement meetings. And it is helpful, I've just seen in my own experience, is that obtaining that information from elementary all the way up, it's helpful because also if they don't have a high schooler or think that this program, they may know somebody else and that could help support the expansion of it. But then it comes back to actually, like, how will we manage this on a budget perspective? And that's why I asked about the grants and collaboration on grants. But that, those were my comments and questions, thank you.
Yes, so if we can finish the presentation in honor of our students and we can tell you about how we can continue the collaboration too, Carissa.
If we go to the next slide?
In the middle.
Middle.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so I guess you're going to be covering more about future plans. And without waiting until then, I'm looking forward to hearing that. I just want to mention for all of us here, a reminder that our district, San Jose City and Evergreen Community College, at one time had purchased property in Milpitas to create a college here. And that property was sold and then that's how we got Evergreen. However, our district really has a strong commitment to serving Milpitas. Even though I, you know, I'm talking to my colleague, Trustee Greeley, I know that many of the, and actually my own family too, many of the students that live here have found their way to Deansa, Aloney, and even some of our colleges. However, we do have to maintain, our district has to maintain our commitment to serving Milpitas. So when we talk about future plans or when we talk about what you just described, that now that more people know about the dual enrollment program, there's this huge interest? Well, I just want to say that I think our district has to maintain our commitment to serve this community. Because that's why we're, we're here, because we have a long-term commitment. And Milpitas has grown quite a bit since back then when, when we had property here. I know one of our board, former board members, his daughter is now an adult. And when they moved here, they thought they were going to have a college here for her, but we didn't. But anyway, so what I want to say is that whatever we receive in a few minutes is good. But I want to say that I want to make sure we're keeping track of the need here. You know, that we're keeping track of what students are really wanting to do, go into the dual enrollment. And especially as we have been talking about, the community. And, I mean, I like the idea of we have a del ed and all that, but for people who can and want to go to college, we want to see what we're doing to serve them and make sure we're, we're doing that. And one of the key factors in all of this is access. We're here because we want to create access for Milpitas. So I think we should all keep that in mind. We have limited resources too, as you do, but let's see what we can do working together to really improve access for the, there's a need here. That's what, that's what I've been hearing the last, you know, few minutes or these minutes of the presentation. There's an unmet need and so I think we should be ready to serve it.
Great segue to my slide. Thank you, trustee. So yes, we are expanding and imploding in the demand. So one, it's a good challenge to have and wanted to be transparent about the budget that we use to operate the Milpitas. So right now, we have a joint usage split of 40, 40%, 60% on certain criterias. But overall, the operations budget for Milpitas is at $1.2 million. But in actuality, it's close to $2 million because we actually feed in a strong workforce funding, about $60,000. And then we bridge that, some of those costs. Because due to the inflation, like, we pay for the electricity, we pay for the cell phone bill, we pay... So inflation and the supplies and materials have gone cost up and then our colas have got, so over time, that, that has expanded our operations budget. But doesn't mean that we can't continue what we have. So if we can meet the challenge together and that we can strengthen these two recommendations of strengthening partnering, continue more of a... of strengthening partnering, continuing more of a grant collaboration. Right now, we partner with our Mel Peters Unified for our K-12 strong workforce and that has supplemented to grow the Mel Peters Middle College. That's how we got expansion of the Middle College there. But if we can continue collaborating together and writing bigger grants. Right now, we are together on the K-16 with the regional grants. But if we can come together and build a bigger opportunity to write bigger grants, collaboration and strengthening and meeting the needs. Another thing is really, we also have a physical, external issues of keeping operations that the grants can't always pay for. So we combine efforts of the foundation and write for foundation money, Mel Peters Unified Foundation and San Jose Evergreen Community College District Foundation come together and collectively write about how big of the impact we can get a foundation that can support some of the brick and mortar initiatives that-- for example, you have asked about the classroom size. We have used up all the space during the times and we try creatively to make sure scheduling uses up all this space and time. So in those, meeting the challenges really heighten and emphasizing more of our collaboration, going beyond just the 60/40 split and building that more with collaborating, writing for external funding with it, whether through grants or foundation. So that's really what the challenge is, is really how we can really partner in building those more opportunity for financial costs of the operations in a wide week span.
I have a quick question regarding that. I recall, I'm not, don't remember exactly when it was, but Superintendent came and presented before our board and showed us what the new workforce, I think, development facility was going to look like. And if I remember correctly, there was also high-tech sponsors, I thought, were going to be around the buildings or in front and so on and so forth. Just came from a conference and was constantly reminded, right? It's because we're from Silicon Valley, everyone has this perception that we just have money just flowing from every which way. That being said, is that have we worked to actually go to those sponsors and ask them the workforce that they're going to need? And how do we ensure that that development would be supporting that? And then how can they contribute with funding so that access is granted to more and ensuring that that pipeline is provided?
So Monty, I want to help you out just a little bit, right? Because this is the excitement that we always have when we get together. Dr. Lee's talked about the vision of how this came about, where there was a will and there was a way. And then, you know, people have changed over time and some of that will has faded away and then, you know, those types of things. So I also want to be mindful of the time because we have like 22 minutes or so and we have another presentation. But I think that there is a follow-up conversation with the appropriate folks about how do we weave that part together and mutually invest? Because I know Monty talking about foundation grants and those types of things takes resources and your, and the resources on the Community College side has got quite a few things that they're doing and the district has quite a few things that we're doing as well. But if we don't find a way to do it intentionally, what we all envision to happen here is not going to happen. So I want to make sure that we do provide the time for the remaining part of the presentation. But then, Monty, I'm Superintendent Jordan. I would look for your direction in terms of, and Dr. Chavez, your direction in terms of how to knit that piece together.
Knit the presentations together?
No, about what the colleagues are saying about the intentionality of securing corporate as well as foundation and other funds to fuel some of these things based on the budget challenges that everyone is having at this time.
Yep, completely agree with everything that you've all said. And as Dr. Dickerson said, looking for opportunities for other revenue sources and also, I think I was talking with Dean Fuentes and President about-- President Lopez, about potential partnership with companies like Rivian, which just moved in. And I think with us together, looking for those partnerships with companies will have an even bigger voice than just MUSD alone. So I look forward to more of that. And we did talk about doing two annual joint board meetings together. So I think we're setting up already the foundation for the next board meeting. Chancellor Chavez?
Yes, I just want to add that, yes, we hear your message loud and clear. You are correct, the transition has, you know, impacted, you know, the collaboration. But I can say it's been a pleasure to work with Superintendent Jordan and her team over the past year to, you know, reconnect and, you know, strengthen those relationships. And it's just as simple as abiding by the joint use agreement. You have the two committees, the operational, the educational program committees that are, again, working on their plans. And then they present to us as executive leadership. And we'll take in mind all the feedback we have here and continue the work going forward.
Thank you. At this time, I'll print-- Dr. Principal Scott to present the two students, actual testimonies from the students that we wanted to share.
Yes, thank you for taking a few moments to hear directly from some of our students who are benefiting from the programs. I'm first going to have Kale come up.
Good afternoon. My name is Kale Huelo.
Oh, mic, bring the mic up and do your thing.
Good afternoon, my name is Kale Huelo. I'm currently in 10th grade and I'm in the business pathway. Since I've been attending Mel Peters Middle College, it's helped me a lot. What I love about attending MMCHS is the cohort environment and the access to having college courses. My freshman year, I barely had grades to play sports and to do activities. But since I've attended here, my GPA has more than doubled and that's because of the access to having college courses. And I've been able to have better grades and keep them up. Before attending here, I didn't want to go to college because I wasn't sure if I was going to because of how I was doing freshman year. And, yeah, just now that I'm coming here, I know I want to go to college and I know I can. I was a little scared being the first 10th grade class, yeah, because of how I was doing at MHS. Sorry.
We're good.
But, yeah, coming here, luckily, we have some great teachers, great staff that really support you and just help me or help everybody be able to just focus and it's just, it kind of helped me understand things differently. Because I feel like I need more one-on-one time and I get a lot more of that being at Mel Peters Middle College. Yeah, and a lot of my peers who also struggled last freshman year, they were also able to get good grades and obtain those grades too. So, yeah, I really benefited from going here.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Nguyen. I'm a current senior at MHS and I'm finishing the ECE pathway this year. And with finishing the ECE pathway, that means I'll be also getting my ECE certificate and that allows me to substitute in early childhood education classrooms, like kindergarten classrooms and also preschools. And to give you background before I start, I want to tell you guys that I will be doing my bachelor's this next coming fall in psychology at UC Davis. And I will hopefully, I will hopefully continue my education with doing my masters in social work after that. And after that, I hope to come back here and hopefully join the extension to be hopefully a counselor of some sort for the students like my counselors were for me. And this may seem unnecessary to many of you guys, but this is, I find that I credit dual enrollment for my success to where I am now because I didn't take a single AP or honors throughout my whole high school career. All throughout my four years, I only took college classes over the summer. And then during my 11th grade and 12th grade year this year, I've taken my dual enrollment and I feel like a lot of people have, were kind of discouraged. I find that I was discouraged by that. I honestly didn't have a lot of courage in myself when applying to UCs and CSUs and even a private school. But so far, I've received acceptances to every single school I've applied to that has gotten back to me. And I find-- And I find that even though many people may have not seen this as a normal way to go through college and high school, it's a very unique way to go through high school. Many people wouldn't have done this. But I find that it's because of the unique experience that I get through dual enrollment that I can credit them for this. They are able to give me access to such wonderful people, knowledge and resources. Like, as I was passing through the offices, I was able to get information about different courses like dentistry and cosmetology, which many people wouldn't have seen around from at just a high school. And the people there like Ms. Scott and Ms. Wayne and Mr. Wayne, they helped me tremendously. They're always giving me information and they're so supportive of me. I didn't have much confidence going into dual enrollment because at the high school, I was a very quiet student. And then going into the dual enrollment classes, I am able to speak. I'm really good at public speaking now in my classes and I feel much prouder of myself. And because of this, I find myself even recommending dual enrollment to my peers at school, people who are in my grade and even those who are in lower years. So many of my friends in sophomore year, I've been recommending dual enrollment to them because it's such a different experience that you aren't able to achieve at the high school. Although the high school is also just as supportive, at the dual enrollment, you're getting a smaller environment somewhat. Also, you're going through college classes, which are a different curriculum as compared to the dual at the high school. And also, they're curated to what you want to do. The reason why I went to the ECE and social work pathways is because I was somewhat interested beforehand. I wasn't as interested in just doing general ed classes. And through the ECE pathway, I was able to learn more about the social work. And social work is something that I find myself connecting really well. And I even ended up writing my UC essay about dual enrollment. And in the essay, I described dual enrollment as a connecting, like a pathway, a bridge to me because they were able to lead me to social work. And I described my connection to social work like a soulmate connection because it works so well with me. So that's why I find myself recommending to dual enrollment to everyone. It's such an amazing resource that I find everyone should take advantage of because you're not able to achieve that outside of high school. And in high school, that's when your prime years that you lead up to college are. And once you're in college, you're on your own. So getting the support you get at dual enrollment where you're taking these college classes and getting the support as a minor, it's much different than in college, but you're still getting that same curriculum and rigor as a college class. So thank you.
Thank you. Are you open to sharing your essay with us?
My essay?
Your enrollment essay.
Like, reading it out?
Not now, just-- if you have a digital copy, it'd be great if you're open to it emailing us so that we can see a copy of it and share with our colleagues. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's our conclusion of our presentation of our joint usage with Mel Peters Unified School District at the extension site.
Thank you. We make a recommendation on the two meetings. We're talking winter and early spring, November, March, like we're doing right now? Is that what we're looking at accomplishing?
Yep.
So that we get a launch, we get a report, the launch of school? And then we, and then this report, we talk about possibly getting into-- and then where we're going to pursue funding? And then in this one, we talk about budget, just in a very similar cycle that we have at the school district?
Do you have a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
Just before staff leaves.
Okay.
We still have another presentation. May we--
Is it regarding the same topic or a different?
Similar, except now this is about our beginning partnership at the Mel Peters High School Extension located at the MUSD Innovation Campus with Evergreen.
Got it.
Thank you.
Yes.
So I'm Preeti Johari, Executive Director of Learning and Innovation at Mel Peters Unified. This evening, I will be presenting with some of my colleagues if they want to come on up, including from Evergreen Valley College, so they can introduce themselves as well.
Hi, I'm Angel Fuentes. I'm the Dean of Business and Workforce Development, Adult Education, Distance Education and Dual Enrollment at Evergreen Valley College.
Good evening, I'm Greg Wolman, the Principal and Chief Innovator of Mel Peters High School and new campus programs.
And then Carissa will also be joining us. Next slide, please. So I believe Karen and Maria, you were asking, what's that new Innovation Campus look like? So we have a short video that we prepared for you to show you what the campus actually looks like. And just some framing for you. The new campus is an intergenerational space and mixed-use space. Our district offices are there, our adult ed school is there, which is serving over 200, 250 students. Our Calaveras Hills Alternative High School is there, serving over 100 students who are now ninth to 12th grade. And then, as others were stating, the Extension Campus for our large comprehensive high school, Mel Peters High School is also there, serving a little under 100 students. And this is what the space looks like. So I think, Scott, if you just click on the middle button, it should go to a video.
It's the same video I sent to you earlier today, Scott and David?
Yeah, I know, I had to-- don't worry, I just had to do something so we could actually hear it.
Thank you, Scott.
Innovation, the act of creation, of building on what came before. Innovation Campus ignites.
I think that innovation was a good, a good choice. Definitely, the opportunities here are like really good. They look really good on your college, like transcripts and stuff. And the teachers, sizes of classes, even though that might change, I think it was definitely worth it. Even though we're a small campus, we actually have a pretty diverse student population. So we have tons of people with different interests, hobbies, passions. We have people that are into sports, people that like anime. And the really great thing about being here is that everyone is super supportive of each other and we all find ways for our own talents and interests to shine.
So I just want to point out, none of those are stock images. Those are real pictures from our labs and from our campus. And to talk just a little bit more about what's possible in those labs, Principal Wolman. Okay, little miscommunication. I think what we just wanted to highlight as we have been touring different funders, just people wanting to learn about our campus, is that while they're coming through for some other purpose, they also have high school kids or kids college age and are making decisions about that. And they're like, wow, what you are doing here is next level. It is the same as what is happening at four-year universities. And so we just, we want to plant that seed of like what our high school students are capable of and how our partnership can really help leverage the tools and facilities that we have. On the next slide. Right, I just want to again, like, bring to the forefront that our district strategic priority of creating educational pathways for our students to apply-- of creating educational pathways for our students to apply their learning to their future careers. And our student speakers were perfect exemplars of that. What we are really invested in doing with our joint partnership is creating those multiple pathways. Not, AP programming is really important and robust at MHS. It's not the only programming. It shouldn't be the only option for our students. And we are looking to create those through our partnerships with SJCC and Evergreen Valley College. And what we really want to highlight is there's not just one trajectory or one timeline along which you need to do that. So that's another place where these partnerships are really critical to helping our students understand stackable credentials. How do you learn in the field you're already interested and apply that learning directly in a career where you can grow? So you can move from a certificate to an associate's degree to a bachelor's on your timeline. It doesn't have to happen in the pre-prescribed ways. So we're going to talk a little bit more about what we already have established and then what we're looking to build with Evergreen. Next slide.
Okay, so now switching gears to the innovation campus, we have access to an engineering pathway that we collaboratively developed with SJCC and input from SJSU over this last summer. And we are very excited to say that we've started that off very strong with a great cohort of young people, ninth and 10th graders, who have been very successful in those first courses. And it's coupled with, as you saw, some great opportunities on that campus. On the high school side, we have some excellent engineering teachers who are also kind of sparking that interest and then supporting their access to the college content as well. We're very excited for next year to start off with an advanced manufacturing pathway that will really supplement well our existing programs that we have with the Engineering Academy. So we're in the process of building that out right now with Dean Fuentes and our collaborative partners at EVC. We are always excited about building new things in Milpitas, so this is a great opportunity for us. Next slide. The engineering pathway is there for you to see. I'm not sure how well you can see it from the distance we're at right here, but we have a three-year pathway fleshed out where one of the things that we heard from our SJSU partners was that for a lot of students in engineering, they really struggle with the higher-level maths. And so we want to make sure as we're recruiting students that that's not a barrier to them and that they are able to access that content. And so to that end, we are currently offering these higher-level math courses. As you can see, by the time a student completes this pathway, they will have done up to multivariable calculus. So up through Calc III will be completed. That makes them excellent candidates for any of these programming because we know the students can already do it. They've already done it. And right now, to support the students in those pathways, you can see that we, we're starting off with our first cohort of, so it's a little small, but we have 100% pass rate. Those are ninth and 10th graders in pre-Calc and pre-Calc trig doing this work. And part of the ways that we're offering these wraparound support services is through our collaboration through the K-16 pathway that was referenced. We have embedded tutors from SJSU in those college courses, supporting those students. And we see the outcomes that result from that collaborations. Next slide. So lastly, like this is just kind of an overview that makes it a little easier to see some of the information on the previous infographic, but we have students coming into advanced manufacturing. We are going to be able to offer them access to some hands-on learning and access to also multiple ways to move forward with this advanced manufacturing pathway. This is a growing field. Smart manufacturing is in constant evolution. And so we're really excited to be able to offer this to our students. We have a lot of industry partners here in Milpitas and in the greater Bay area that are able to offer great opportunities for our students to enter the workforce when they have these kind of courses under their belt. We are looking at some different on-ramps and off-ramps as students move through these pathways, looking to recognize their achievements as they go through the pathway. So looking at developing the certificates of achievement, moving towards the associate's degree and onto the bachelor's degree in engineering if they choose to go that route. So we're excited, as I said, this is kind of new, right? The advanced manufacturing is still to come. It's starting in the fall, but we're off to a great start with our partnership with EVC and we have some great opportunities on the horizon. So we're excited to share more about that as we implement this pathway. Next slide.
So I just wanted to explain briefly the general idea behind the pathway for our advanced manufacturing degree. It's made out of a certificate in advanced manufacturing plus our General Calgetse California General Education Transfer Curriculum pathways for our GENETS and all that. All the Calgetse pattern is transferable to universities, both UC and CSUs. Of course, curriculum is always evolving and you'll see this, some of these names will change, especially in the Calgetse area. Right now, we're introducing six different, same courses, but different names in the fall semester that will be exactly the same name, same courses at UC and CSU. So as soon as we'll be able to point, that's that, I took that. And slowly over time, we'll be able to do that. The whole state is doing this, moving all the courses to equal course numbering, et cetera. So it's easy to identify what's one-to-one. But on, you know, the pathway you see here is our certificate in advanced manufacturing. And you can see, in blue are the courses in engineering and one manufacturing course, which is transferable. And the other ones are directly related to the trade, to the CTE degree, Certificate of Achievement, which teaches them, you know, they can go into jobs. And some of our partners are mentioned here, but also students, right now, one bachelor's degree of science in advanced manufacturing in the state of California at a community college, but more will be popping up over the next few years. I know a few colleges here in the, in the Bay area that are applying to offer bachelor's degrees in advanced manufacturing as well, which will be able to articulate to once they have that, once they have those degrees, all those bachelor's degrees. Of course, our, our courses transfer to theirs, but not to the UC and CSU, not the green ones, because of the nature of the courses and the inability of the universities to have the same courses. So there's nothing one-to-one at UC, let's say, for us to be able to transfer that. But the ones in green definitely, or blue definitely do transfer and the entire Calgetse pattern as well does transfer. When I, when I started, when I took over dual enrollment, et cetera, back in January, I always have the, my vision is to teach the whole family. And I provided an update at the board meeting, our board meeting, and I actually have an update on that and I wanted to share very briefly. Since then, we already have a curriculum proposal for a non-credit course to teach parents, teach family members about college, to guide them through the process. A lot of us are first-generation students. We had to navigate all this on our own, but our faculty are so excited. I thought it would take months and it took literally three days for the faculty to, for me to tell them, can we do this? And then to go, here it is, can you approve it? And I was like, okay, approved. But they, they, they want to teach them, you know, we're not teaching them, we're not doing counseling, we're not doing student services. What we're doing is, this is how you do this. This is where you go for this. This is how you help your son, your daughter. This is how you help yourself do this. If you want to take a course, right? As part of that non-credit, so it's free course, we're also going to teach him our options. You can go into this degree, you can take all these other courses yourself. You can, right now, while your son, your daughter is in high school taking dual enrollment, you can go into this field and start in a non-credit perhaps, or even for credit, if that is what they choose to be, if they want re-career or if they want to, career. If they want a job, something that they've never envisioned before, we'll be able to provide that as well for those families, for the family members as a whole. So we're very excited, the faculty are very excited and we cannot wait to do more. And you know, slowly over time, of course, as I said, the curriculum is ever-evolving. We're right now, right now, working with our, one of our nonprofit organization partners to create a contextualized artificial intelligence course for advanced manufacturing, which we will provide as an elective for the students if they want to take it. So that's coming, it'll take about a year to do that, but we'll get there. Curriculum takes a little time. But we're also working with, you know, this is the perfect time for Milpitas to get into this, I keep saying this, because we formed a consortium, Evergreen Valley College, Deansza, Foothill, West Valley, Mission and Olonee, together with San Jose State University, we formed the Silicon Valley Advanced Manufacturing Partnership Consortium and applied for a Department of Labor grant and received $5.7 million to support our advanced manufacturing through, through dual enrollment and college as well. So we'll be able to support our partners at the Milpitas School with the grant as well as ourselves, our own, our own degree for on-campus students, let's call them. So we're very excited about this and I cannot wait to see where this goes and where our students go because this is the start of their lives, the start of their future. So I feel, I don't know, I'm going to take credit for it.
Thank you.
But it's amazing. So thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, next slide.
Thank you.
Want to do a quick time check? Okay.
7:05. I'll make it brief. So in summary, good evening again. It's just great to see all of you come together to talk about this tonight. We know that a strong partnership with all of you ensures more first-generation students not only enroll in college, but successfully complete their programs and studies. It also ensures that students and community members are understanding that there is more than one path to success in their post-secondary pursuits to a fulfilling career. And I think it's, it's on all of us to start to advertise that more and to try to figure out, how do we say that? Because there are so many community members across our nation that are still stuck into there's only a couple of ways to do this. And we all know that there's many ways to do it and we're still building more ways. But how do we, how do we advertise that out in a different way, I think is what our current challenge is. With budget priorities on everyone's mind, we are still confident that our partnership will continue to bring opportunities to our students through course offerings and commitments to creative staffing solutions moving forward. I know it's weighing on everybody's minds, but I'm confident we can do it with the team that's in the room and the team that we have in all of our colleges around us and Milpitas Unified. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that said, that concludes the presentation. We do want to be mindful of, we have a board meeting to start. So we're going to start our regular board meeting in about seven minutes, but we do want to open up the floor for one or two questions and then we'll move forward. So I'll leave it to the Board President, Mr. Alexander, to select who can provide the questions at this time.
Okay, we'll go Clay and then we'll go to Karen.
Thank you, President. Thank you, President Alexander. First of all, this was an amazing presentation. Second year on the board, but our first, my first joint session with our Milpitas colleagues. I'm a classroom teacher, but I also teach a, three sections of dual enrollment courses. So I know how much work and paperwork and operations goes into developing these programs. So thank you for our Milpitas partners and also for our San Jose City Evergreen staff who put all this together. So three questions, I know we have time constraints. The first question. Given ongoing collaborations between Milpitas and San Jose Evergreen Community College District, what specific support services and resources are available to assist Milpitas students enrolling in non-CCAP courses in San Jose Evergreen Community College District? And how is communication coordinated between the two districts regarding special admit forms? And what is the process for handling paperwork and enrollment through the special admit form process? Whoever can answer that question.
That was one question long enough for three, so that'll count as one. And then we'll have your colleague go next. Who'd like to answer that question?
Okay. Second question is, what are the, what's the target enrollment numbers for the Milpitas Middle College? Are there any anticipated or existing staffing resources, facilities or budget that constrains that enrollment target or expanding the program? And the third question.
Hold on, we're gonna. We'll answer question number two if we can. If we, if we need to take more time to get the resources together to answer that question, please let us know. Do we have the ability to answer that question right now?
I think we can answer question two.
Okay, we can answer question two and then we'll go on to your colleague.
Great, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
So with regard to enrollment, right now with our staffing, we can enroll up to 100 students next year. So that is awesome, that's excellent, we're growing. In terms of what resources, what are some constraints? I will say, one of the things that we're looking for is solidifying more transportation, secure transportation between the extension campus and the main SJCC campus. Being able to offer transportation both ways to students would benefit the program and expand the number of students and I think ultimately improve the matriculation rates as well for our students there. In terms of additional, right now, we are able to fund, we have a variety of grant fundings that's able to support our students there. So as we move forward, the, the plan is to continue to grow so that we're able to reach maximum capacity at that site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For that first question, just because our board policy does have a special admit process, who, I'm just wondering, who kind of is in charge of managing that?
So Milpitas has our own counselor, so we do the admitting through the counselors. Yes.
Thank you, Moni. And your colleague?
Mine's just more of a comment, just two comments, but one is just, I saw the, you know, the video with regarding the innovation campus. And I'm just hoping, because technology is changing like on a daily, right? And so with that being said, is that those partnerships that you noted on there, Amazon, Kellogg, and I can't remember the other two, but to ensure that, that this innovation center is actually innovating the job force that they're looking for, because they're already way in advance, right? Like we have cars that are going to fly, that are flying in other countries actually that have access to that. And so I'm just like really concerned that we might not be along with the, with the times. And then just one other thing was on the calculus math, is it how I only saw like 12 students? And I'm going to assume that this is an average cohort of grades, it's like ninth, 10th, and so on and so forth. And it's normally around 500, 600 students per grade. I'm just a little concerned the fact it was so small.
For the first part, really quick, five seconds, we, one thing we do is that we include them in our advisory boards and they help with our curriculum updates every time it happens on a yearly basis. The industry comes in and tells us how to update it and what they're doing so that we can meet those needs every time.
The second part of the question, yes, those numbers are small, but not in comparison to our total enrollment at the site. We're in, I would call it upstart mode, where we started with 50 students, grew into 73 at that site, but we're looking to enroll 100 new students each year until we reach capacity about 460, 485. That's why that number is small. Otherwise, we're looking at getting it much bigger, starting in August.
Thank you.
And I just add, like, so our request to you, as you talked about your commitment to Milpitas, is while we're in startup mode and building these new pathways, staying with us as we have those smaller cohorts. We are confident in two years, three years, we're going to triple those numbers.
Absolutely, thank you.
So Board President Norwood, we'd like to thank you. And what I would like to do with our board is entertain an emotion to adjourn and then we will go ahead and move on. I'll let you go on with your meeting. So is there a second? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye, I'll raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed, no. Any abstentions, none. All right, Board President Norwood and Milpitas Board, thank you very, very much for this joint session, you hosting it, and good luck on your next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will take a, we will take a three-minute recess and then we will read adjourn in our regular board meeting. We'll take a three-minute recess. Good evening, MILPITUS. I'm your 2025 Board President, Chris Norwood. Welcome to the meeting of the MILPITUS Unified School District Board of Education. We appreciate your attendance and participation in our education proceedings, which align with the guidelines set forth by the Ralph M. Brown Act for Open Meetings. Tune into our hybrid-style meetings online, on either Zoom or YouTube, or in person inside the boardroom here at the Randall World Languages School. Public comments can be made while you are logged into Zoom or if you're in-person. YouTube, however, is a listen-only option. If you're unable to do either of these, please visit our written public comments webpage for instructions on how to submit your written comment. One comment per person is allotted to each item. Closed session announcements. There were no closed session announcements. Now, it's time to review and approve the open session agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second. Did you get that, Scott?
I'm sorry, no, I did not. What's that?
Kelly on the motion, Trustee Jung on the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Student board members, you ready? Okay. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none, motion carries. Flag salute.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Kedet Semir Krusoto, and accompanying me this evening are Kedet Petty Officer Garcia, Kedet Geary, Kalise Nguyen B., Lynn Gonzalez C., T., and Pingal. We are here on behalf of the MILPITUS High School NJROTC Program. Everyone, please stand, face the flag, remove all hats and hoods, and place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. You may now be seated. Thank you.
Scott, our... Scott, comments from the public?
Yes, thank you so much, President Norwood. Let me see where we're gonna go. I believe we had a hand raised online. Let me just double check. Okay, so, we're gonna go on to our online public commenter first. Alyssa, or Allison Nguyen, forgive me. We enabled your audio. Please take yourself off mute and you have two minutes to speak. Go right ahead.
Hi.
Ooh, Allison, we had you and then lost you. Give us one sec. Okay, now take yourself off mute again. There you go. Go right ahead.
Is it better to, okay, great, thank you. Hi, my name is Allison Nguyen and I am the general education TK teacher at Burnett. I would like to address the current decision to transfer Lena Kongfutakun's TKK ESN class to a different school site. I did share last week, however, I learned it was a special board meeting, so here I am again. Moving her class to a school site on the other side of town would negatively affect her students and their families as they would no longer be attending the school that is with their neighbors in their community. Having taught at multiple sites in MUSD over the years, I have worked with many special educators, and unfortunately, there has also been a high turnaround with special education teachers. At Burnett, Lena has become an integral member of our school and she has a plethora of knowledge with how to support neurodivergent students. She has been a great resource and guide to me and other general education teachers with various strategies, including calming strategies, visual cues and aids, and behavior support. Additionally, she and I have been able to implement inclusion within our classes. Every day, our students spend at least 30 minutes together. Through this, my students have learned empathy toward peers. This includes neurodivergent students and students with other disabilities, who they may see but do not often have the opportunity to interact with. They have also learned how to communicate with others verbally and nonverbally and understand that everyone has varying needs and expresses themselves differently. In our district, we strive to have inclusion in our classrooms and we have been implementing exactly that before it has been universally adopted across our district. Moving Lena's class would negatively affect me, the general education teacher, as well as my students, as you'll be taking away an invaluable opportunity to learn and practice compassion and understanding from some of our youngest learners in the school district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Allison. And let me see, I believe, okay, that was it for our online. And then I'm going to read a public comment from Jerry Campos of Dragon Way with children in the district. Hi, my name is Jerry Campos and I am a former president of Palmeroy PTA. In May 2022, the PTA started to work on reopening Palmeroy's library as it had not been in use for several years due to the library system crashing. Many volunteers have donated their time to getting the library reopened. Over 6,000 books have been entered into the libib.com, which was recommended by the administration. The books have new barcodes and are ready to be borrowed. Although the library is not complete, several classrooms have gone to the library and students enjoyed it. Palmeroy Administration has advised that they will no longer have a library and will transform the space into a multimedia room. Instead of throwing out all the work that has been done, is there another school that could benefit from what has been done? Libib.com has an annual subscription of $92.50 a year. Thank you. All right, and then, ooh, I have one more public comment, a written public comment that I'll read. This is from Lauren Peterson of Almanasa Court with children at Randall. At the recent school council meeting, the 2025-2026 budget for Randall was shared to be cut by about 100,033%. I am concerned that programs that are essential to student progress are in danger of being cut. I'd like to formally request two things. Information to be made available about why these funds were cut, two, that a plan to replace these funds be included in a future board meeting. And moving along to our in-person public comments, we have a request for a group and it is Lena K., I'm not gonna butcher your last name, Catherine Fanyan, and Tiffany Tulio. And we're gonna put five minutes for the group to have.
Hi, my name is Lena Kongfutakun and I would like to discuss the ESN continuum at Burnett. When I was first hired on with MUSD in 2007, I was a BMT, now called the BIT Program. I supported all students at all sites from preschool to middle school. The first class I worked in was Miss Ayala's at Zinker, then Rose, Waller, Palmeroy, and all of the elementary schools that house the moderate to severe students. Each school has their own culture, their own way of doing things, and I had to adapt each time. When I started teaching in 2013, I thought I could put down roots at Spangler, but after five years, there was an opportunity to create a continuum of a sense of support needs, classes ranging from TK to sixth grade, when Burnett agreed to house all three classes. I agreed to join the team at Burnett to support our students because I know transitions and changes are extremely difficult for our families and students. It appears the ESN program is going to be changing again. The difference is, I was not asked if I wanted to participate. Burnett and our incoming parents would not ask for their insight. If we want to build something better, we should be building it together.
Hi, I'm Timmy. I am, this is Cameron Castillo. He has been with Ms. Lena for a year and a half now. Sorry. And I'm here to talk about how Ms. Lena should stay at Burnett. Logistically, if she were to move to Palmeroy, it would be a nightmare for special needs kids. We have to physically walk our kids to the actual classroom. We can't just drop them off. I've had niece and nephew that attended at Palmeroy and the parking itself is just a nightmare, trying to get kids to go in and out of the class.
Hi, my name's Katherine. This is Caleb. I've been with Burnett since 2016, 2017. So, I have four kids. So, it's gonna be hard for me to like take them to school if Ms. Lena moved to another school, since I have three general classes at Burnett. And then, if Caleb moves to a different school, it's gonna be a little hectic, difficult, since most of the school here starts at same time, as well as parking. And also, moving Ms. Lena's class to a different school will affect my son negatively. Since him moving to Burnett, I've seen improvement of his, you know, speech, his, the way he approached people, social skills. So, I've seen his, his learning improve. So, moving him to a different school, a different teacher, might regress his progress. Since he's already with Ms. Lena for almost a year, he built up his trust with her. So, meeting new people, new teacher, might affect him negatively. So, I would like to request if Ms. Lena's class would stay at Burnett. It's more convenient for my family and for Caleb's learning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent Jordan, could you please look into the situation why Lena is being transferred across town? In addition, I'm requesting that we have a study session on the special ed, how the process works, how each side is staffed and supported, and how do we transition kids from elementary school to middle school as well as to high school? Thank you.
Okay, next I have, and I assume this is a group, parents of Randall. Okay, we're gonna put five minutes up. You guys will have five minutes combined as a group.
Dear members of the MILPITUS Unified School District Board, we, the parents of Randall Elementary School, are deeply distressed and angered by the proposed budget cuts for the next school year, especially the potential of eliminating the Little Heroes program. The Little Hero program is not an extracurricular activity. It is a lifeline for our child's development. This program fosters leadership and a sense of belonging through games, activity, coaching, and mentoring. It was profoundly, it has profoundly impacted the social and emotional well-being of our students, leading to a dramatic increase in suspension rates. Our school has moved from yellow to the green zone, thanks to the invaluable connections and support this program provides. Randall Elementary is a duly emerging school and is a vibrant tapestry of cultures. The Little Heroes program is crucial in helping students from diverse backgrounds connect and support each other. It offers a structured environment where students can overcome language barriers and build meaningful relationships. This sense of well-being is essential for their smooth transition and overall success. We implore you to reconsider the budget cuts that were, that would devastate Randall Elementary. Our school, our children desperately need programs like Little Heroes to connect with their peers and develop essential social skills. In addition, we want to express that the Little Heroes program is perhaps the only opportunity that many Randall children get to participate in teams or exercise. As Randall is a Title I school, there are many families who do not have the opportunity to pay for any physical activities after school. This will directly impact their mental and physical health. Cutting this program risks leaving many students behind, depriving them of opportunities to grow into leaders and mentors of tomorrow. Please do not let our children suffer the consequences of these cuts. They deserve better. Also, we reached out as part of the community, Randall community, to express our deep concern regarding the reduction of office staff hours due to budget cuts. Randall is not just an exceptional school. It is a community that welcomes and supports fundamental programs such as Adult School ESL, the Family Resource Center, FRC, and various organizations by other schools and districts itself. The office plays a crucial role in the operation of our school community, ensuring that these programs and services continue to benefit our students and families. Reducing their hours will negatively impact the efficiency a level of service to our, that community deserves. This work is essential for Randall's daily success and to maintain the connection between students, families, and the district. For these reasons, we respectfully request that decision to be considered, that alternative solutions be explored to avoid disrupting the functioning of our school and well-being of those who rely on these services. We appreciate your attention in this matter and look forward to the response that reflected district's commitment to education and Randall Elementary. Sincerely, the parents of Randall Elementary School.
Thank you.
Superintendent Jordan, this is the first time I've heard about the Little Heroes program.
so if we could get additional information at a future board meeting in regards to that program. What I also heard is some information about reduction of staff time. Now, that wasn't very clear as far as where that thought process or assumption is coming from. Could you please investigate a little bit more and provide us, board, a little bit further details? Thank you.
Okay. Next up for in-person public comment, David Flashner of Milpitas, children in the district.
My name is David Flashner, and I'm a parent of a special ed student in this district. My daughter is currently a 7th grade student at Thomas Russell. This district is falling flat when it comes to special ed services. Yes, I'm saying that. I don't want to speak for every MUSD special ed family, but when I talk to my friends that have a special ed student, not a single one says that they feel good with the current status of MUSD special ed. Mom and dad are looking at all of the material that lives out on the MUSD sites to find out more about special ed offerings at the various high school offerings in MUSD, as our daughter is gonna be there before we know it. You board members all seem to champion the Innovation Campus and the Middle College High School, and for good reason. They're wonderful learning opportunities for our students in this district. But do they have really any focus on special ed students? We just watched a video showcasing the Innovation Campus in your previous meeting. There was not a single special ed call-out about serving students who need support at the Innovation Campus. When I go to the websites, I don't see a reference to our special ed community from reading through it. It's just not hurtful. In my mind, it's borderline discriminatory to our special ed students. The Innovation Campus website homepage calls out it's specifically targeting women and students of Latino and African-American descent, which is great. But why that and no focus on our special ed kids? Is my daughter not welcome? I want the best for my daughter and the best for every other MUSD special ed student. Roughly 10% of the district is special ed. I'm calling on the MUSD board to direct the district to conduct a survey of all special ed families to see how they think the district is doing. That survey should be done by someone outside of learning and development. We need to ask difficult questions, sorry, we need to, we need to ask difficult questions and be ready to receive feedback that is not good, that shows gaps in support. But if we don't ask questions like that, how will we ever make it better for kids that need all the help they can get? Thank you.
And that is it for our public comments at this time.
Thank you, Scott. And I'd like to thank everyone who came to the board meeting today and spoke either through written public comment or in-person public comment. The board heard all of your comments. The executive cabinet heard all of your comments, and they will be responded to accordingly by the appropriate staff members. Or in the event that you need to have additional conversations, or like Vice President Yipchuan requested, the study session in regards to special education, and also the public comment that was made by Mr. Flashner in regards to the status of special education. So again, thank you, everyone who made the public comments. We know it's not easy coming up there to express your opinions, especially when it comes to your children. We're gonna work through all of these things, as we always do, and we'll continue to move forward. Are there any other comments by the board? Awesome. Thank you. We are now on item 15, MUSD strategic goals, starting with our student reps.
Build a culture, build a culture of "we" that engages parents, staff, and community partners in supporting student success.
Improve communication systems for better outreach to parents, students, and staff.
Develop educational pathways that allow students to apply their passion in learning for their future careers.
Focus services and support systems to ensure that all students are engaged in their learning and are making social, emotional, and academic gains.
Identify, excuse me, identify creative, student-focused strategies to accommodate enrollment growth and ensure healthy learning environments.
Thank you. Item 16, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. And thank you, everybody. Welcome to our Randall Road Languages School, which is our host of our board meetings. So just a brief update tonight. I would like to share with everybody that our academy and travel, Academy of Travel and Tourism is having a showcase event next week. And the 11th graders and 12th graders will be pitching ideas that they have for different businesses. And we also will have some community members there to provide the learners with feedback on their business plans and models. And if there's something that you would like to visit or be a part of, please do connect either with Principal and Chief Innovator Wolman or with the academy lead, Ms. Tricia Robinson, or myself. And this is an update on our enrollment. As you can see, since August, we continue to grow, and we've gained 10 more students since the last board report. And as we recently saw this video, which Mr. Flashner referred to, I won't show it again. But now is the time that we are looking at how we are assuring that all of our high school learners know of the different pathways that they have available to them. And the MHS extension at the Innovation Campus is one. There's also the Calaveras Hills High School, which is focused on project-based learning and offers a smaller environment for kids. And we have our student board member rep at the end of the dais here from Calaveras Hills. And we also have our Middle College High School, which is another program, and, as I just mentioned, Travel and Tourism and our Digital Business Academy, as well as a lot of other different opportunities for learners. Our average daily attendance is down just 0.05% since our last board meeting. And I would like to point out that we do still have Mabel Matos and Palmeroy that are in the running around the 97% target rate. Milpitas High School pops up there. As you can see, it's only a half a percent away. And we continue to strive towards that 97% goal that we set for ourselves. I'd also like to share at Milpitas High School, our Performing Arts Center is really coming to completion quickly. It will have a soft opening in August, and it will be partially ready for some of our learners who are interested in the performing arts to utilize that space. And then it will be completely ready, and we'll have our grand opening in early 2026. And this is just a slight view of what it looks like from the drone vantage. Right now, where you see these people standing, that's the theater part itself. Those are where seats are going to be, 550 seats are going to be located. It slopes, as you can see, it kind of slopes downward, and it slopes towards the stage. And there is also going to be an orchestra pit. So our learners who enjoy playing musical instruments and will be performing alongside our thespians, they will be there as in any professional theater or performing arts center. So we're super excited about that and look forward to the opening. Now, while I'm trying to find the stop sharing button. Found it. I'll also add that this later, at the end of the school year, we're going to have our 25-year perpetual artifact that we will have buried at the Innovation Campus. And it will have artifacts from Milpitas now for the future of Milpitas in 25 years to open and see what's in the time capsule and then put their own things in it so that 25 years later, that generation of Milpitasians can open it up. So we look forward to that first week of June. And also, our post-secondary class and living space for the living lab will be open as well for our grand opening in June. And then we look forward to Phase 3 of the Innovation Campus being completed, because amongst having a workforce development center and early childhood education research center there, it will also have a cafe that our students of the post-secondary class will run. Now, this takes me to the highlight of tonight's board meeting, which is all of our recognitions. So if I could have the executive cabinet and board join me in front of the dais. First, we would like to recognize Ming Kwak and Ocean Supermarket, along with Mr. Guan Ali Santos, for your generous support of our special education community. It is with funding from the Knights of Columbus, as well as you and your family, Mr. Kwak, that we are able to fund things such as our life skills lab. And so we greatly appreciate your commitment to serving our learners with special needs. And I'd like to invite you all to come up.
Good evening. Yeah, let me introduce our Grand Night first, Mr. Kai Pang. Can you, you have a few words you want to, yeah, you want to introduce us?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, member of Milpitas High School District. I'm Kai Pang, currently the Grand Night of St. Elizabeth Council 8747. And on my right, on my left, is Ming Kwak. He's the owner of the Ocean Supermarket. And we have one, Ali Santos. He's the chairman of PWID, People with Disability, Intellectual Disability. We are raising money for that, so Juan's gonna tell us about it.
Thank you, Grand Night Kai Pang. Good evening again. Thank you. We're happy to be here today. And let me just say a few things here, very important. First of all, in order for us to be successful in this program, several things need to happen. Number one, of course, our partnership with MUSD. MUSD has provided student volunteers and, you know, such strong support. Without student volunteers, we wouldn't be able to do this. Okay? And next, also equally important, the support from Ocean Supermarket, year after year, very consistently. And I have Mr., you know, Ming here with us. And I just want to express, you know, our gratitude to you and your family, and also your customers. Without you, we wouldn't be able to do this. And I just want, you know, everybody to know that, and we really appreciate it. You know, you and your siblings, your family, employees, customers. And last but not least, the St. Elizabeth Catholic Church community, which included, you know, the priests, you know, the Knights of Columbus, families, volunteers. Without all of this, this wouldn't happen. So let me share with you the amount that we were able to provide to MUSD Special Education Program this year is $6,349.49. So with that, Mr. Kai Pang, can you please present the check to MUSD? Okay. And I have the certificate from MUSD here. Yes, this is for our partner, Ming Kwak and Open Ocean Supermarket. Also, we have one more. Let me read it for you. Certificate of Appreciation. This certificate is awarded to Ocean Supermarket as an expression of grateful appreciation for your outstanding community service in the 2024 campaign supporting people with intellectual disabilities. The Knights of Columbus, St. Elizabeth Council 8747, PWID Program Chairman, Guan Ali Santos, dated March 25, 2025. And again, thank you all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ali Santos. And thank you too for your time that you have served us. Okay, next, we have three young athletes who have successfully completed their season in wrestling with our coach, Roberto Clemente. And I would like to invite them up, along with their families and also our Milpitas High School staff. The first star athlete has finished fifth at Central Coast Section Championships, and that's Marionella Gallegos. Our next young woman is Lauren Gorosby, for being an amazing student athlete and a two-time league champion, winning the Northern California Regional Weight Class Championship. And our last person is Tong Vee Le, and she won the Central Coast Section Weight Class Title, finishing as is two-time CCS Northern California Regional Champ and three-time Santa Clara Valley Athletic League Champ. All right, so let's have you in the middle. And we can have Principal Wolman and any others of our Milpitas High School team or your families. Are any of your other teammates here? Okay. Congratulations. Okay. This one, Coach Williams, you and your team have done amazing work. And this year, as you pointed out, after winning the Central Coast Section, you then went on to the playoffs, and in only nine days, traveled from Salinas down to Gilroy, and even further, playing four games and nearly winning again. You guys are incredible. It's been quite some time, I think 25 years, since our soccer team made it this far. Thank you very much for saying yes to Milpitas. We need the team. Coach, would you say a few words while the team's coming up?
Wasn't ready for a speech. We have about 17, I think, said they were able to make it. Just, can I say? Let them get all going and stand down. Let them figure out their pictures, because it's important to them. Just thank you for the recognition. It's up to, the boys did all the work. I just gave them the platform to be able to perform. I couldn't do it without my wife. I couldn't do it without my wife supporting me at home. She's here tonight with my daughter. Everybody give her a round of applause. She's hiding, it's okay. My assistant coaches that were able to make it, Coach Jutan, Coach Ed. Coach Mark is at home with his kids. Coach Kuwant is in Sacramento, being inducted into the Community Colleges Conferences Coaches Hall of Fame, which is like his fourth, fifth, or sixth Hall of Fame induction. I lose track for him. And overall, just boys, proud of you, these moments, remember them. We need to recognize the 16 years that helped lead this young, brand-new team to the championship, especially Mr. Gonzalo Moreno Sanchez, here, our captain. He's the last one that really, he experienced what we used to be as we were building. And that is four wins in a season, and he's been here since a freshman. So thank you for all the work, man. And then lastly, thank you for the support from the district, and thank you from Milpitas Athletics and Athletic Director Butcher, getting us all the shirts that we're able to get going on today. And thank you much.
Okay, our next team, led by Coach Cham Rensherr, is our Milpitas High School Varsity Boys Basketball Team. And they too made some stellar defeats of opponents, of course. And they were just phenomenal to watch, especially the way that you guys did your passing and set each other up and made your, did your scoring. And as you can tell, I'm lousy when it comes to commentating about sports. But I just want you to know, it was really exciting to watch, and I sure wish I could have been there for the soccer team next year. But I would like to invite you all up, and I'm super proud that you're the first public school to beat private school and West Catholic Athletic League of the Central Coast Section open. So congratulations. Could I have you all come up, my coach? Coach?
Thank you. I haven't seen these guys as a group in a couple of weeks since our season. And I'm pleased to be able to reunite with them under these circumstances. And it was a pretty special situation. And I'll say this, as I'm trying to keep it together, after that final loss, they accomplished some great things. And what they have is unique as a group and also as individuals, because the dedication, the commitment, the fraternity, all those things were evident every single day. And we had to cut practice so many times just to save them from themselves. And it was awesome to see a group like this come together. And it lets me know that there's more to winning than talent and what's on the roster, it's character. And these guys are high level. You won't see a group like this again for a long time. And I told these guys, when you go out into the world, you're gonna be good, great at everything you do because of what you accomplish here, because you can put your mind to anything, and you're all special and unique. And I'm so happy that everybody got a chance to see it. Thank you. And then I also have to thank my family, my wife and my son, you know, for putting up with the long hours. And yeah, I'd get in trouble if I didn't say anything. Okay, I think I'm done. And other parents that are here, come on up. Come on up, don't be shy. Everybody, come on up. And then we'll figure out how to organize this. I'm doing good. How you doing?
Awesome.
Thank you.
Good job.
Yeah. There you go. Now the chair.
Thank you. Okay, this Milpitas superstar is National President of the National Association for the Education of Homeless Children and Youth. She is also somebody that we and Milpitas Unified have had the opportunity to work with for over 10 years. And she is a champion for our learners and also for our team members. And in order to assure that everybody has the opportunity to spend time with her wisdom, she wrote a book called Radical Self-Care. And I would like to ask Nicole Stewart to come up and be recognized for your good work. Would you like to say a little bit about the book?
Ms. Scott requested a 10-minute speech, so that's okay. No, I've been a social worker for 23 years, and here in Milpitas for 11. And burnout and turnover is very real for social workers. We meet people on their worst day, when they're having the most challenges, and that's what we do 50, 60 hours a week. So my book is Radical Self-Care for Helpers, Healers, and Changemakers, because I know a lot of educators and social workers, we want to stay in this work long-term. We don't want to burn out, but we need support to be able to do that, and we need resources. So that's what the book's about, and I hope it helps folks. But I love my work, and I love working in Milpitas, so thank you all.
We have our team members, come on up. Milpitas High School team members, secondary team members, Ms. Scott. And now we have our maiden MUSD, and we have our maiden MUSD team members from both Randall and Milpitas High School. I'll start first with our Randall. We have Ms. Sylvia Tapete, who is one of our campus--
Spangler, not Randall.
Sorry, Spangler. Spangler, sorry. Take two. So we have our wonderful team members from Spangler Elementary School with Principal Jahal. And we would like to recognize Ms. Sylvia Tapete, who is a campus supervisor. Did I get it wrong again? And Erin Paul, our STEAM teacher. And first I'll ask Principal Jahal to say a few words about each of you, and then I'll ask each of you to say something.
Yes, Erin Paul, who's our STEAM teacher, really works with the primary students, and this is our first year as a district. We're providing technology, science, and art to students from first through third. But she's also helping us from fourth through sixth in art and technology. But above all, that's her job title, but she's also helping with taking drinks, snacks to teachers at random times, working with students, check and check out. So students who are, might be struggling with emotional needs, she comes to the office in the morning, they come and do a check-in with her and check out, and she's brilliant at everything that she does, so we really appreciate that. And Ms. Flores?
So I'm gonna share a little bit about Sylvia. So Sylvia is a valued member of our Spangler community. She is there every day in the morning to help support with supervision while our students are enjoying breakfast and while they are doing their morning walk. She's also there at lunch recess, and she is very diligently supervising students and will come to me if there's any safety concerns that she sees or if she sees any students that are struggling out there, she'll reach out to them and really support them. And not only that, but if we do need support somewhere else on campus at a different time of the day, she's always willing to come back to campus and volunteer her time. So we really appreciate having Sylvia on our staff.
Well, first of all, thank you. I love everything about being in the Milpitas community and especially Spangler Elementary. I think we have the best principals, we have wonderful teachers and staff, so I'm just really grateful to be a part of the community.
First of all, I want to say thank you so much for the principals, because I feel so happy to work in Spangler for everybody. And I'm very happy to be part of the district and heal Milpitas. Thank you so much for everything.
Quick picture? Thank you. And we have from Milpitas High School, at the Milpitas High School Extension, Ms. Saaji Kim, who is one of the founding members of our program at MHS Extension and is always there to support our learners and their endeavors. And I would like to welcome you up. And is Ms. Grimpus online? She's online?
Yes.
Oh, awesome. Principal Wolman, will you take Ms. Grimpus? Oh, okay. Well, Ms. Grimpus is the principal secretary at Milpitas High School. And she is that person that, if you didn't meet her there, maybe you met her on the football field where she was a football mom, or maybe you met her in the textbook room, because she did textbooks, or maybe you just met her in some other volunteer capacity. But Ms. Grimpus is really one of those people who's integral to our community and very glad to have her. And while we're waiting to pull her over, Principal Wolman, would you like to say a few words about each of our maiden MUSD honorees?
Can she hear us? I understand. So I'll speak to Ms. Grimpus that's out there. Many of you know her. She is one of the, one of my secretaries at the Milpitas High School, the main campus, and she was very welcoming to me when I came into the district and helped me learn about what Milpitas is and what Milpitas High School is, and helping me run the high school every day. That is not just an easy say, like, hey, helps me run the high school. Like, she really digs in with me and figures out the why, the how, what are we gonna do next? How can we do it? And we're always thinking partners of what we can do next. How are we going to achieve the next step, supporting our parents and our students and our community members, our staff? So she's just been a, she's an incredible agent to our, to our cause. And she will be retiring sadly, as of July 3, I believe, is her last day. So if you see her around, please tell her thank you for all she does, because really, we are going to be less than without her. So thank you out there, Sandy. And to Ms. Kim, who is our leader, teacher leader at the Milpitas High School Extension at the Innovation Campus. She took on that role this year, was named our lead teacher a ways through the school year. But her faith in her district to say, hey, this innovation-- But her faith in her district to say, hey, this innovation thing is gonna go, and I'm gonna go across the way, and I'm gonna teach there. She brings such an amazing positive power to the classroom that I know we had students that enrolled at Innovation Campus because she is there. And when she takes on the problems of the day and like, hey, we're thinking about doing this, she comes back with, that's great, I'll figure that out, but I want to go and do this. And it's this great back and forth of us checking each other to make sure we can get the things done and the holes we're looking for, the successes we're trying to, trying to get to. She's just an awesome addition to our staff. And the things that you see coming out of our school, she is always part of that piece to make it happen and make it go. That's why you're being honored tonight. So thank you.
I'm actually really, really honored just to be nominated for this, because I really just see myself as the mouthpiece between the students and the holder of the purse strings over there. Our students actually kind of call him behind his back, their school father, because whenever they want to do something, they come to me, they're like, can you ask Mr. Wolman? And I'm like, I'll go see. And then I go ask him, and then he says yes. So even like the Innovation Recruitment video, that was a student that did it. A student was shot, recorded, everything. They had an interest in videos. I said, okay, what do you need? They're like, we need cameras, we need X, Y, Z. And I said, okay, I'll ask your school father. And guess what? You made it happen. And so, yeah, really, I, I'm just there. I'm just, I'm just happy to be a part of everything. So thank you, Mr. Wolman.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. Mr. Richardson. Anybody else from Milpitas High School? Mr. Weber? Thank you. Ms. Stewart? That concludes our recognitions. And now we have, because they were so wonderful last year, we have our young women here this evening to celebrate Holi with us.
Hello and namaste to the MUSD board. I would like to thank you for having us here today to present about Holi. My name is Parnika Sadhu, and I am here with my friends Puja and Nishka to spread information about this festival and why it is celebrated. Holi is a vibrant, energetic, and multicultural, two-day celebration of colors that take place every year in March. The festival celebrates the beginning of spring and the victory of good over evil. And it's held on the last full moon day of the lunar month. And the festival sees people smearing bright colors on friends and family and offering prayers. Beyond its vibrant revelry, Holi symbolizes the onset of spring and, in Hindu mythology, signifies the triumph of good over evil. Holi is a reference to Lord Krishna and his love for his beloved Radha and his cosmic play with his concerts and devotees called Gopikas, who are also revered for their unconditional love and devotion to Krishna. Holi is the celebration of the eternal and divine love of Radha and Lord Krishna, and it celebrates it by playing with colors and/or flowers. Holi means to love all, forgive all, and start afresh. This festival of happiness and togetherness, a festival that represents the district's amazing culture of we. Holi is a time to cherish the bond of friendship, and a popular wish that everyone has is, may the, may the festival of colors fill your life with brightness and prosperity. In recent years, the colors of Holi have started becoming more eco-friendly and organic to keep the environment safe. We have also brought some of them to share with you today to wish you all a Holi filled with laughter, fun, and endless memories. And my little sister Ashwika would also like to say something really quickly.
Thank you for, thank you for celebrating the Festival of Colors with us, and Happy Holi.
If the board members wouldn't mind, we have some of the colors that we'd like to share with you guys, if that's okay with all of you.
Sure.
You could have brunette? For you? Thank you. Happy Holi. Good to see you, Livia. Happy Holi.
Thank you so much.
I'm 17 on our agenda, Superintendent's Executive Cabinet Report.
Thank you. We will start tonight with our Spangler team.
Good evening, board and cabinet. We're so happy to be here today. Ms. Flores and I decided to change up things a little bit. So Ms. Flores is gonna go over attendance. And then Ms. Chung and our students are gonna talk about a math practice that we've been implementing from our TK all the way to sixth grade, and we wanted you to see it in action.
All right, our quick attendance update. We do have up there our monthly, end-of-month daily average attendance, you know, December, January, the six months. So we're bouncing back. And right now, we're at 95.55%. And at this time last year, our average daily attendance was 94.27%. And right now, we're currently at 95.81%, so we're really excited about that. This year, we did start some new attendance initiatives. So students who are there every day and on time, do you get an attend, like, an outstanding attendance tag that they get to collect throughout the year to see if they get all months? And then we also have trophies for our top primary, intermediate, and TKK classrooms that have the best attendance for the month. So they get to house that in their classrooms for the, until the next month.
Good evening, everyone. So today, we will be talking about a signature practice that we are implementing at Spangler. It is called Math Talks. And we love our Math Talks because they offer a variety of ways for kids to engage. Number one being that it encourages the students to have deep critical thinking skills and reasoning, because we're moving away from rote memorization. We're moving away from procedural knowledge and really making sure our students understand the importance of differentiating their strategies, being able to explain their mathematical reasoning. And number two, it is low floor, high ceiling, which means that all students in my classroom are able to engage with this task. It is a short five to seven minutes before most math lessons, just to either front-load information or review certain concepts that we previously already learned. Third, and most importantly, it offers students the ability to be creative and flexible with mathematics and to really think about all the opportunities in which they can share and critique each other's reasoning, which all aligns with what Nia has holding up here, our standards for mathematical practice, which are in our 2023 mathematical standards that we are adopting here in Milpitas. So I'm gonna bring it over to some of my students, and they're gonna share some of the learnings that they have from this year. We're gonna start with Nia, who's gonna break down what exactly is a Math Talk?
Hello, my name is Nia Vinod. Today, I'm gonna go over our Math Talk procedures. We begin our Math Talk with Ms. Chung giving the class a math problem to think about. The question depends on which unit we're working on. For example, if we are on a fraction unit, then we could have a question such as, what is 3/4 equivalent to? Then Ms. Chung gives us one minute to think about the question. We show a finger for every unique idea we can think about. The next step is to turn and talk with a buddy on how I would solve the problem and listen to their method. We often use sentence stems such as, I agree with you because, or I see it another way. I think Math Talks are important because it helps us learn math in a new and fun way. We discover new ideas and strategies to solve problems. I also feel that allows students who usually remain quiet in class to express themselves. Thank you for listening.
My name is Jasmine Musa, and I like Math Talks because I can share my ideas without being judged. For me, being able to talk without being judged is important because I have a speech issue which causes me to not pronounce some words or sounds clearly. It's important to me to not get interrupted in the middle of my explanation because it makes me feel like I'm not fully heard or not heard at all. I appreciate that Ms. Chung creates an environment where everyone feels comfortable sharing their ideas, even if they are not always collecting the story. Also, I like how Math Talks are focused on collaboration and sharing thoughts and ideas. I like how I can talk to a friend near me and discuss the problem. Since we have different ideas, we can build upon each other's ideas and collaborate. Then, when we get to share to the whole class, other kids or groups can add on to our original idea. As a result, we come up with many different solutions for just one problem.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Andrew Lee Wurshanshi Lee. I am here to explain how Math Talks expand our knowledge and how we think of math altogether. First, Math Talks require everyone in the class to communicate and justify their solutions. For instance, one person could state that 3/4 is equal to 6/8 because they rest on the same point on a number line. Another person could note that 3/4 is also equivalent to 6/8 on fraction circles because they look identical when overlaid on top of each other. Other students can use different methods to solve a problem, such as multiplying the numerator and the denominator by the same number. This explains that there are many ways to answer and justify one solution.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brandon Zafudo. Math Talks can help students understand math because it shows students how they can use different strategies and methods to solve a math problem. For example, if you need help on a certain unit of math, like adding and subtracting fractions with unlike denominators, you can listen to the strategies used by others when trying out the problem yourself. As the other student discusses their strategy out loud, you can learn a, you can learn a different method to solving the exact same problem. I end up learning both from Ms. Chung and my peers in class. It encourages me to be more flexible in my thinking and even use some of my peer strategies in future assignments and tests.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Avian, and I'm a fifth-grade student. Today, I'm honored to speak with you about the importance of Math Talk. Math Talk demonstrates that there's always more than one way to approach a problem. Recently, in a Math Talk session, we explored fractions. I would like to use the explicit example. Imagine two students, Bob and Joe. While Bob prefers to add fractions using visual models, Joe relies on the standard algorithm. When presented to the Math Talk question, 5/8 plus 9/16, Bob may prefer to add the fractions using a pie chart, while Joe would use the standard algorithm to calculate the sum. Even though their methods differ, they both arrive at the same correct answer, 1 and 3/16. This demonstrates that math is not just about finding the answer, it's about understanding the different ways to solve it. Math Talk allows students to share their thoughts to come to the same conclusion. By encouraging discussion, we can enhance each other's understandings and make learning more engaging and effective. Today, I'm here to advocate for the continued use of Math Talk as it fosters deeper comprehension and critical thinking in classrooms. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your time, board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments for the, for the board?
Is this just for this class, or is it like across the grade or across the school?
Yes, we have tried implementing it the past two years already across all of Spangler Elementary. K, oh, TK actually does it too, all the way up to sixth grade, where we focus a lot more on data talks in our data-driven environment right now.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Quick comment, like, did you ever think of having some projects for them to be able to showcase as a symposium for us?
Yeah, we can definitely do that. My kids absolutely love mathematics, and it's really opened up their eyes on different ways that we can approach it and make it fun. And that's the whole, to make it fun and relevant for their learning every day.
Life is all about numbers. I have a number person, software engineers. Thank you for the amazing presentation. It's always a treat to watch, kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I will come to your school to get a personal tour of that.
You are very welcome to come anytime.
Mr. Superintendent James?
So I just, or students, I need to see you, because I'm actually talking to you.
Students, come.
So I was the eager student paying attention to you and texting my coworker, who is over the residency program now. And at San Jose State, they're teaching teachers to do these Math Talks. And so when I see our resident teachers learning how to do this and we, and as HR, potentially hiring them into our district, that means more kids across the district will be able to experience math as you are. So I want to thank you for how cleverly you participated in giving us that education on Math Talks, better than any San Jose State professor, I must say. And to your teacher and administration for making it a signature practice. So I know Board Member Jung said he's gonna visit, but I would encourage any and everybody that can come to really see how this, how this style of mathematics education really is the basis of the Common Core standards. And I'll leave it there. Good job.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you very much. And next, we have our Milpitas High School team.
Okay. Oh, I don't know. Yes, I do.
Good evening. Good evening. School Board President Norwood, School Board Members, Superintendent Jordan, Executive Cabinet. We are proud to highlight Milpitas High School this evening. As you can see on our slide up there, we're starting uh, oh, hang on, we're on the wrong slide. There we go. We're starting with our Milpitas High School Extension at the Innovation Campus. Highlighting that campus, we've offered four college courses this year for our startup year and adding four more for next year. Our current enrollment is at seventy-three, which includes adding a student today. Thirty-three new students are enrolled for next year so far, but more recruiting efforts are being implemented, including April first, Russell Middle School will receive a presentation from our staff and our students attending uh their assembly schedule. Rancho Middle School will be on April eighth and will be hosting a parent night in April, yet to be scheduled, but we're working on that at the moment. Once our middle school parents, meaning all of our eighth graders, uh run home with the great news about their opportunities, uh our parents will come and be able to walk through our campus and spend some time with us uh at the extension. So previous enrollment efforts are are uh not limited to the following: parent and student tours of the campus. By appointment, student shadow days to experience the campus during the school day. Field trips from both middle schools, Rancho Rancho and Russell uh have already been completed. Informational flyers are available via Parent Square and our school counselors have been handing them out. Also, we are also recruiting uh from our private schools in Milpitas to make sure that they know that there are more choices for high school than they may think. With all of these efforts, we're hoping to bring a new uh new group of a hundred students per year uh into our campus, which will repeat itself year after year after year. So eventually, our graduating group uh will number in the hundred to about a hundred and sixteen, is my guess. Additionally, we'll be debuting advanced manufacturing and multimedia production next year at this campus. Next slide, please.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Um, it says that the MacBooks, there's like MacBooks for enrolled students. So um all of those at the end of the year are returned to the school, right? Or are they?
Well, similar to how at the main campus, you acquire your Chromebook at enrollment and you keep that through graduation, unless there's a a turnover or redo from our tech that students would keep those until graduation. Similar.
And then um I noticed the freshmen this year got like these brand-new Chromebooks. Are those, is that also gonna happen for the MacBooks? Or will they be reused for the new group of students?
For right now, the Milpitas High School, the main campus, will use those updated Chromebooks or those new Chromebooks and those will, those will move through with students. There's currently not a plan to bring MacBooks to the main campus, but it is something that could occur.
Wait, no, I'm asking, after the MacBooks for these current students, when they graduate, they'll be returned to the school and then reused for the students at the Innovation Campus?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Yes. Sorry, Mr. Ernst stood your question. That's correct. Okay. Next slide. Great question. Thank you. So with almost, speaking of the main campus, with almost three thousand students, two hundred and fifty-six staff members, how do we highlight one thing? How could we encapsulate all that we do? For sure, nothing is accomplished without the great efforts of our staff. Our parents, community support is incredible, and our students, they are the true diamonds in our community. So I s- so I say, so they're so great, but what data do we have to show that? How great are they? One example is this. Over a year ago, you can see on the top left there, we started this campaign to have a fight-free campus. The data that you see up there is something like I've never seen in twenty-seven years. Fighting is down seventy-one percent. When I built this slide as of a week ago and as of today, it's reached seventy-two percent in comparison to last year. So when we said a year ago that it was possible, I still believe that it is. I've never seen a swing of numbers on a graph or a chart like that, ever. Suspensions for all infractions, which includes fighting, are down fifty-six percent. I've also never seen a number like that. So that's a testament to our students, our community members, and what Milpitas is and what we can accomplish. Our district attendance goal, we all know, was set at ninety-seven percent and we hit it dead-on to the number, no tenth minus back or fourth or a hundredth of a percent. It landed exactly at ninety-seven percent for Milpitas High School. With improvements like this, this is what will start to trigger other data sets to start to move on graphs. When our students are present and safe, we will start, we will start to see other goals achieved as we move forward. The collective effort needed for these results is hard to quantify, but with our work on creating real PLCs, professional learning communities that includes all of our teachers, empowering our leadership team of twenty-six members, which includes administrators, all the department leads, membership from our MTA, collecting comments and great ideas from teachers and our classified staff across the campus, the reworking overall of our library or overhaul of our library, the review of our safety team and procedures, working with our school banker to create more streamlined practices and an accounting of practices of whether it's academic or it's fiscal, to review that and see what really is and how are we gonna move forward, creating and evaluating multiple different data collection pieces and increasing the enrollment and energies of our booster clubs for our students. Our parent-teacher association are just a few of the highlights that make up the big ship of Milpitas High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board or student board members or executive cabinet?
So the one question that I have, you had mentioned the the decline of um fighting and suspensions and expulsions and you said that you believe that that is a um a key to achieving different goals. What is your number one goal now um in as you start to conclude your second year?
It's to attack the relevancy of our education, our day for our students. When I think about four years, a hundred and eighty days for a ninth grader to come through and make that journey, what does that feel like? What does that look like? Are they able to see their day as something different than what I saw my day a long time ago in high school? How does that look for the next year, the next day, the next week? And can our students say that they enjoy going to school, which means your attendance rate goes up? It's relevant to them because we keep reimagining our, our joint board session earlier was about how are we gonna work together? But really, that's about affecting our day for our students. So if you want to be in school for your own reasons and your group, your attendance rate is gonna start to waver in the right direction because their why is not about us telling them. Their why is about, I want to be there because I can go and do this. So when the head comes off the pillow in the morning and yes, there's, the parents and teenagers' actions will always be, come on, we need to hurry up, we need to go and all that. But that's the norm, but saying, hey, I don't wanna go? That's a different conversation in the household. That does affect attendance, does affect the care on a test that you take that could waver a test score. The real focus is on the relevancy of each day for each kid, each student, each learner, and how are, how are we gonna answer to that? How can we do that? And it's not gonna be me, it's not gonna be one person here there. It's that collective group that we saw earlier today. And you see a collective group of our young learners here talk about how they learn. And I learned different and I learned different and all together, but it still gets to the same goal. Their math is relevant to them. When we talk to an eleventh grader, what do you wanna do in the next coming year? So it's like, well, I don't know. Or, why don't you know? What's the next question you're gonna ask? And you can sit and talk with them and eventually the story comes out. But if they don't know what's possible out there and we're not telling that story, then that day is like, well, maybe I'll go to school, maybe I won't, and maybe I'm done for a while. Like that, that doesn't work for us. We're trying to drive attendance, which means that's related to the relevancy. If it's not relevant for me to go, I'm not going. But as they get older, and we have seniors now, they're telling us, Mr. Wallman, the school is great. I like my teachers, I like my, I gotta figure it out. I got a three point eight nine. I'm already accepted. I call like, why am I gonna go? We get dinged as a district for attendance, but reality is, we should be celebrating. Like, we did it. The pre-K TK, all like down here, we've got them all the way coming up and they're sitting in front of us as a senior going, yo, y'all did it right, I'm done. Like, that's, that's the beauty. But our system that we haven't reevaluated, it's not, it's not your, your, your parameters, I guess, but as a state level, federal level, why are we punishing school districts for creating this incredible student that is confident enough to stand up and say, Mr. Wallman, I just don't go some days because I got a job, I'm just going to college and sometimes I just stay home and do my schoolwork and I gotta, I gotta figure it out. We created the success that we've all been trying to do, but we get dinged on attendance. So that attendance rate would have been a little bit higher. But you all did, we did it, we did it. We should be, that should be a huge celebration.
Appreciate that. No, appreciate that. Thank you for mentioning the fact that you did talk to seniors um about the attendance and they shared with you um where they were, their journey, and the fact that we do have. Thank you for that. Are there any other comments from board members?
Yeah, a question for you. So congratulations on getting the fights uh to seventy percent down and suspension fifty-six percent down. Can you share with us what, what are you doing differently? What works, what, you know, what didn't work?
Look at your phone. Look at your phone.
Listen, Abbot.
Can I help? Uh, and I say that Greg and I, Principal Wallman and I, talk probably once a day, if not more. And I text him because when Board President Norwood was asking the question, I wanted to make sure that he also shared what else he's doing behind the scenes. So I wrote, you should mention your vested interest in looking at MHS systems and working with your staff leaders on addressing breakdowns and building anew.
Okay, good. Yep. It's really hard to answer. Thank you. That's, yes, that is happening. It's, that's, could be a piece of it, but it's really hard to quantify. I think some of it is just saying what could be. Because when this started, before we started to break down systems and rebuild them back up, it was just a statement of, why do we have fighting on campus? I was running around, I have, I, an, a whole admin team running around trying to separate a fight, but it's the aftermath of that. You could have a child that's hurt, you could have two children that are hurt, a group that's hurt, then you gotta separate it. We need to talk to parents, we need to figure out why did it happen? Multiple students, multiple independent conversations. Police could be involved, medical staff is involved, parents, the neighbors. It turns into this huge operation that takes all of our time away from doing, working on something that's maybe more positive for all students. So you multiply that, next fight, next fight, next fight. It's happening again. It's just, I just saw the resources being pulled out and it's not a place where you want, anybody wants their children to go to school, which then affects your attendance rate. Like, Mom, Dad, it's not really safe or I don't wanna go today. Like, we can't let that take over. So it's making a statement that we can have a fight-free campus. Why would you come to a high school to get in a fight? It doesn't make any sense to me. It's like I'm going to Safeway to buy a Mercedes. Like, you're in the wrong place. It doesn't make any sense. But until we believe that, from the little ones all the way up, it's not gonna be possible.
Right.
So when we, we surveyed all the staff and all the students, like, hey, how is it possible? Two hundred people in the room at a time. And ten, eleven hands would go up. But now, when we show the data, like, hey, we're three-quarters of the way there.
Yeah, I would also add that you're capitalizing on those who see possible and in the mean, meanwhile, building relationship with everybody else so they can see that they matter and they, they can be possible.
And there's, between our counselors, our assistant principals, our teachers, our parents, there's hundreds and hundreds of conversations underneath that help those students make another decision other than, hey, we're just gonna put hand, hand to body, so to say.
Right.
And they're making other choices because of what staff and parents are deciding to do.
Right, so just, just a comment. And, you know, for me, I, I'm an observer and I go to the people uh at, at the end who, who actually uh receive the services. And from the feedback that I've gotten, the biggest change, at least that's been told to me, is that you actually talk to the students. So I'm gonna give you lots of kudos for making that connection. And as Superintendent Jordan indicated, it's that connection, it's those rela- relationships that we start building and hopefully expand on that makes a fight-free campus possible.
Thank you, Principal Wallman.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Norwood, Student Board Rep, may he has another comment.
A Principal Wallman, there's one more comment.
But yeah, I think it just speaks to like how close you are with the students because, wait, I don't know if you're aware, but like, a lot of people make like jokes about like, um, when you walk around su- um, school and like your orange suits and stuff and, oh. And I think it's really cool how close you are to the students. Um, I was just curious about like how these numbers compared to pre-COVID numbers because I know that statistic you showed is from last year. And like, did violence rise or fall after COVID? And like, how do these numbers compare before?
It's an interesting question. I'm not sure on that. Alls I can tell you is that in meeting with uh other school administrators, it's like, yeah, it's always been really close to these numbers, but we haven't really dug in to, hey, let's go back ten years and just see what it is. But what you're asking is uh really similar to what other research has talked about, like pre-COVID, like people coming back to school and we're seeing more conflict. That's what was startling to me when I see how great Milpitas is and our students, but I kept seeing fighting. It didn't, it didn't work. It's like, it doesn't belong. So we need to figure out how to have more conversations instead. I left out one thing I just remembered. I, I asked admin team this morning. I said, okay, presenting to the board, these are our numbers. Like, wow, all the effort that was put into that, but we haven't had a fight since November twelfth was the last time.
Nice.
Twenty twenty-four.
Good.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, I'll start over here quickly with Assistant Supervisor Damon James.
I just wanna highlight the administrators that helped at the Santa Clara County Office of Education and Recruitment Fair, where there were a record 500 participants. I also wanna highlight that we're very fortunate in this district. Milpitas had a station, and, you know, at 9 o'clock, people swarmed trying to get interviews, to come into Milpitas. And as I was one of the people that was, you know, signing people up, the, the teachers sharing their stories of, you know, "I have a 13-year-old, 13-year veteran teacher from another district. My school closed." Or, you know, "I was eight years in a district. I didn't have enough seniority. I was laid off." That was a common, was much more common than it's ever been. In fact, there were more people with experience than fresh out of college or out of the program. But just quickly, Ryan Starts, Vanessa Vaughn, Jackie Bo Felbinger, Shankar Laamia, Vern Cruz, Casey McMurray, Destiny Oaks, Greg Wolman, Gillian Valdez, Emily Delore Elifson, Kristen Prolos, Robbie Baines, Sean England, Jennifer Tuitas, Nicole Klein, and then from the HR team, obviously myself, but Kristen Stonehouse, and then our classified employee, Maria Montoya. All of those, Marielena Montoya, all of those people really came together to create a very special recruitment fair this year. So just thank you to them.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Executive Director of Inclusive Services for All Learners, Mary Jude Dorpenas.
Good evening. Tonight, I wanna focus on, Scott, if you could cue up my slide deck, please. I'd like to highlight a couple of events that are supporting increased inclusivity, not just within our district and in our schools, but also out in the community as well. Next slide, please. Here you see Cafe 14. Here are students over at Sharon Preet Wally's class had their cafe. You'll recognize a few faces, including a couple at the dais here, where the students learned communication skills, leadership skills. They were servers and greeters and managers and cashier's. And I will say, the, oh, what was the name of it? The hor, hor, what was that? The horchata was delicious, and as was the yogurt parfait. And the students were very proud of themselves to communicate, share, and make you have a good experience while you were there. Next slide, please. This is also a highlight from our Milpitas Inclusive PTA, or MPTA. Last night, we had a presentation, a joint City of Milpitas, MUSD, Milp, MPTA, presentation on how our students with disabilities or neurodiversity are able to access summer programs. John Makin from the Recreation and Community Services of the City presented to our parents. They had an opportunity to ask questions and to find out how, if their student needed accommodations or support, how can their kid participate and be included in the summer events that are offered by the city? Also, the city took in great, they asked for feedback and ideas. So I think they walked away mutually with some good feedback for future events. We continue to increase our partnership with them, and I have our second annual Egg Hunt coming up on April 7th over at the Delano-Mannong Park. That'll be available for all preschool to third graders of students with disabilities and their families, and registration will be coming out. We'll be eliminating it to 400 participants this year. We had 350 last year, but we had such an increased demand that we have increased it this year. We're looking for volunteers, so if you're a student or an adult, secondary-level student who wants to volunteer, please contact Jennifer Tuitas or Michelle Sheer. We'd love to have you join us in supporting an experience for our students to be able to fully participate, participate in an egg hunt, and for our families and parents to be able to be on the sidelines watching their kids enjoy it. That concludes Silent De Report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Business Officer, Dorothy Rogenose.
So our business services team is almost done with our 24-25 budget meeting with the site administrators and department heads regarding their current budget standing. On Thursday, March 13, I joined the Milpitas citizens, some PTA parents, and the Valley Transportation Agency for the Great Mall Access Study Walk Audit on their proposed transit-oriented development at VTA's Great Mall Transit Center. This Thursday, I will attend the 2025 Silicon Valley Education Foundation Women in STEM Leadership on behalf of the Superintendent Jordan. Gabriela Rosas, the superintendent's mentee from Cal Hills, will accompany me. So we're looking forward to that. And this Friday, we will have the City School Collaborative Subcommittee Meeting. That's my report for tonight.
Thank you. That concludes the Executive Cabinet Reports.
We'll go to item 18, Student Board Representatives Introductions and Reports. Scott?
Okay, we have two of our Student Board Reps here today. Our, our Milpitas Middle College High School rep has fallen ill. So we're gonna start with our Calaveras Hills High School Student Board Rep, Gavidia.
Hi, I'm Marcella Gavidia, and I'm representing Calaveras Hills. I wanted to give a shout out to our softball team. We're currently number one against other continuation schools. And we also had a field trip to Evergreen College today, where students get to check out the campus and learn about the different things they can study there. And I wanted to invite everyone to our Mustang Experience this Thursday. It's 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., where you can see the amazing work students have completed this year. There will be food, vendors, information on college, financial aid, prom ticket sales, and more. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now, we're gonna go over to our Milpitas High School Student Board Rep, Maye Chum.
So this week is Trojan Olympics Week, which is the biggest leadership event of the year, and tickets are being sold for $10 until Wednesday, when ticket prices will rise to $15. Trojan Olympics is an event where 40 students from each grade will do a choreographed dance and compete in games. Last Wednesday was Deco Day, when we put up all of our decorations for this event. Scott, can you pull up the... Yeah, so this is actually the freshman class. This is what they did this year, and it's really incredible. It looks so real. It's so good. So I just wanted to like, really highlight how good they did. And then, the, wait, the freshmen were real, by the way, for their TO theme. Every class has a theme. And then the sophomores are the Incredibles. So this is that Villains Machine in The Incredibles, and then they did this really good texture on the building. And I didn't take more photos, but basically, everything they have is like this high quality. And then this is the juniors. They did Scooby Doo this year, and then they have like, these really cool like 3D like built things. And just like, it was really cool. And then the seniors, you think that cutout is store-bought? No, like, people painted those, like, and they look real. Like, it's so cool. And I think these pictures really highlight how Trojan Olympics and all the work that leadership and the class officers do pull people together from that grade to work together towards a common goal, and really inspires people to make art and raise school spirit. Yeah, and then on that note, to raise school spirit for TO, we are doing a Spirit Week, where we're really trying to emphasize using the Five Star app. And the main way we're pushing it is through TO points. So whichever class is able to get the most students in that grade to check in at our tables during lunch gets TO points. And then, community service hours for seniors are just due in 18 days on April 11th. And then lastly, we're partnering with EF Tours to go to Italy this summer. So students will be visiting Venice, Florence, Pisa, and Rome, and the deadline to sign up is March 31st. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Student Board Reps. Really appreciate all the information that you continue to bring back to the board. We'd like to stay informed on the activities, and we all... I think the majority of us will be there on Friday night for the Trojan Olympics. Mary Jude.
I just wanted to say, if there's any seniors looking for community service hours, if they're due on April 11th, April 7th is our Egg Hunt, and we, we would love to have them join us.
I'll be sure to let our PR team know.
Awesome. Thank you. For the sake of time, we're gonna bypass the Board Communication Requests, and we're gonna go straight to the... Or, we're gonna bypass the Board Group Agreements, and we're gonna go to Board Communication Requests. And this time, we are going to start with Board Trustee Dr. Naka.
Thank you, President Norwood. I had gotten a chance to be out there in the community, and the Ramadan, this is the month of the gratitude and reform, to whoever's celebrating Happy Ramadan, Ramadan Mubarak. And there was an Iftar event celebrating the women in the community. And also, I got an opportunity to attend the SEC SBA Lunch and Learn Meetings to learn more about the agendizing the items, and a lot more, which were really educational for me. And thank you for attending the Chamber Crab Feed. It was a huge success. Whoever has supported us. And also, super proud of our middle and high schoolers with their exceptional efforts at the Science Olympiad Regionals, which were held at our Milpitas High School. And few of the community events were like, I volunteered at the charity Bingo and Kids Against Hunger. If people are not aware of that program, the students, I have seen some of our MUSD students participate out there, and they packed 25,000 meals, who were, for the kids, who were needy and hungry. And this was in 90 minutes in our community, in Milpitas. So that was amazing to see, the participation. Also, the climate change film screening. Again, there are a number of MUSD students at various levels, from middle and high schoolers, that I see them participate in the community, engaging themselves in the events. So also, the last but not least, the Aria University, which is the only university as of today in the city of Milpitas, which is offering masters in computer engineering. I would like to see in future our students coming back after their bachelor's to be able to pursue many other verticals, not just the computer sciences, so that we are able to retain the talent out here. And this was a high tea at the University of Silicon Andra, which is renamed as Aria University now, with the Council General. I just wanted to bring this up to the community to be able to understand that we do have a university for the masters if somebody is looking for their children to be able to pursue local, locally, as a university. And that's pretty much it, and that concludes my report. Thank you, President Norwood.
Thank you. Trustee No.
Thank you, President Norwood. Today, we heard various enrollment numbers for Innovation Campus today with the joint board meeting with the San Jose Evergreen City College. The Milpitas Middle College High School mentioned 265 projected enrollment. Greg Wolman, our Principal at MHS, mentioned about 73 for the MHS extension. I would like to see the totality of the enrollment, projected enrollment numbers in our Innovation Campus, between Cal Hills, Delta Education, Milpitas Extension, and the Milpitas Middle College. Looking at potentially the impact on our Innovation Campus, because we've said multiple times that it can support up to 500 students. Again, just wanted to see the projection of those enrollment numbers and where that sits with our Innovation Campus.
Well, earlier this evening, Principal Wolman shared that in his report. I will put it in the weekend report for you.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Board Clerk, Yum.
In the interest of time, I...
Vice President Yitron.
In the interest of time, I'm gonna skip. We've been here since 4:00.
I can roll with that train. Item 21, Reports.
We have a report from Future Grads, which is arm of the Boys and Girls Club. And this year, they started with our high school students across all three of our programs, Calaveras Hills High School, Milpitas High School, and also Milpitas Unified School District, Middle College High School, to connect with learners who then become mentees and participate in the program a few times a month, and also develop a mentorship. And that mentor will, or somebody will mentor them through college, which is the piece that really stuck out for myself and also Principal Wolman. And so we have tonight an update on how it's going and what the future brings.
Hello. Good evening, Board Members, Cabinet, and Superintendent Jordan. My name is Kim Nguyen. I am the College and Career Readiness Advisor for the Boys and Girls Club of Silicon Valley for our Future Grads program. I would also like to welcome Mark, who unfortunately is not here due to him being sick, but he is at least listening in. He's our Chief Program and Strategy Officer, including Erica French Arnold, who's our Vice President of our Teens and Post-Secondary Success. So they are listening in. Thank you all so much for your time and attention. I know this is late, and we are excited to share an update with you all. Next slide, please. Wonderful. So I just wanted to share a little bit about what Future Grads is and what it entails. So Future Grads currently supports our MUSD learners to and through college. So we began this program in the beginning of summer of 2024. And right now, our main focus is supporting students for eight-plus years, continuing and beginning from 10th grade all the way up until graduation, and even beyond that, and helping them find a job or be ready for work. And so essentially, they are learning skills that are going to help them throughout their high school years. So they'll learn about the college systems. They learn how to network, how to be prepared, be prepared for career, and how to set goals. So these lessons that we're teaching with them are after-school, and we call them our Leadership Academies, that you'll hear a little bit later on. Not only including that, we provide individualized support. So we support with college applications, financial aid, and any college selection. So we're not only just looking at students that are interested in a four-year, but we're open to supporting them with our community college, trade school, certificate, any type of degree they're looking forward to their post-secondary. So we're open to all options and supporting them. We also give them access to academic resources, our networks within our Boys and Girls Club of Silicon Valley, our college field trips, and all of this is all included and completely free for our students. Once learners are in college, we actually continue our advisement. So we provide one-on-one advisement. We prepare them with career readiness opportunities, and have in-person virtual workshops for their students. And our program mostly focuses on first-generation students, but our program is unique in that we actually don't turn any students away. So we're open to all students, but mostly focused on our first-generation students. And in general, we are hoping to equip our Future Grad students with the tools for them to not only access higher education, but for them to graduate college successfully and to build those invaluable life skills. Next slide, please. So here is a quick snapshot. As I mentioned, we are here at all three high schools. Currently, right now, we have about over 75 learners in our program. We have tripled that number since the beginning, when I started in here in September. They've also participated in our Boys and Girls Clubs event. So two of the events that they participated was our holiday party. So we had the students write down a bunch of wish lists, and they were able to get a lot of gifts, fun activities, food. And they were able to meet all of our other Boys and Girls Clubs. So we are all across San Jose County, including Morgan Hill. So this is a great opportunity for our students, not only in Future Grads, but to meet other students and members within the Boys and Girls Club community. Also, our girls who participated in our program were able to go to an event called International Day of the Girl, which is an opportunity for our girls to meet women from various careers, participate in fun events, and to gain skills and mentorship. So one of our girls, Anu, from Milpitas Middle, actually got a contact from one of the lawyers. So it was a really great event and really empowering for our girls in Future Grads. So those are just some of the few opportunities that the Boys and Girls Club is providing for our students. Our learners are also going to college trips. So we took them this past semester to San Jose, San Jose State University, Deansville Community College, and San Francisco Bay University. And this spring semester, we're gonna take them to UC Berkeley and Stanford. So we're making sure that we are addressing all the different college systems and giving them an opportunity and access to see what the school is like. And then in general, we've had a total of 10 Leadership Academies, which is our after-school programming, and we have our 12 lunch meetings so far. So every month, we have our after-school meeting and our lunch meeting that our students are participating. Next slide, please. So here are our general goals for 2025. So right now, we have over 25 learners, but our goal is to enroll over 150 by the end of this academic year. Right now, the 75 learners are majority 10th-grade students. So this is the month moving forward to the end of the year of where we're gonna start recruiting our ninth-grade students. And so that we have our numbers and increasing that number, we would like the learners to attend our Summer Academy. So Summer Academy is essentially... So Summer Academy is essentially a four-day-long program that jumpstarts their college journey. So think of it as like summer orientation or summer bridge. They are fun-filled days full of activities, college prep sessions, career panels, a really great opportunity just to build community and learn about what is Future Grads and how can that help me as a student. And our fourth day will be a college field trip where we'll be attending UC Santa Cruz. So a fun-filled day, week-long, a really great introduction into our Future Grad and also building that community, which is really important key for us as a program. Another thing that we want to implement is our Future Grads Crew Model, which is essentially an additional support for our students. And so we have our crew leaders that are going to be 11th and 12th, and they'll have four to five members that they're going to support along the way, meaning that they'll check in with them, making sure they feel supported in the high school, and having them attend our meetings and our events. So that's another crew model that we want to implement this next year. And lastly, the two other opportunities and goals that we want to have are scholarship opportunities. As we all know, school is very expensive. So this is something that we want to provide for our graduating seniors and then continue to have our college and corporate field trip opportunities for our students and other fun-filled events. Next slide, please. So you might be wondering, okay, how are we going to get to 150? And so here are some of the recruitment strategies that we've had so far. Other than we are working with the school counselors and admin to get referrals, we are also posting on Parents Square and sharing with our families about the program. I am tabling during lunchtime, so letting the students know about our program. I've also done some presentations in the classroom as well, so being able to talk to the teachers and getting that five to 10 minutes to introduce the Future Grads program. Also utilizing homerooms. So homeroom is a really great opportunity at Milpitas High School to be able to be in front of all of our ninth and 10th-grade students. So actually, we'll be doing that tomorrow. So a really great opportunity there that I collaborated with Mr. Wolman about. We're also creating a really fun Future Grads informational video. So this will be a great opportunity just to kind of get a great idea of, you know, the day-to-day, what that looks like visually other than pictures. So we started tuning that last week and we hope to have that ready for this cohort of students that are coming up for the ninth and to be share that with our families. We have our luncheons that I'm doing twice a month. So essentially, we're inviting students to come have some pizza and drinks and learn about our program and have a space and time for them to ask any questions. And last but not least is our Ambassador Lite program. So we found a lot of success in our recruitment strategy is by word of mouth. So friends telling other friends like, hey, come and join Future Grads. And so we found a lot of success in that. And so we are having an ambassador program where we have current students right now that are recruiting. So meaning that if students are able to recruit 10 or more students, we actually are providing a stipend. So if they're able to recruit at least 10 students, they'll get $100. So a really great opportunity for them to share about our program and to spread the word about Future Grads. Next slide, please. All right. So I do want to just take some time to share to our students in Future Grads and their experiences with the program so far. So here we have Emmy. She is a 10th-grade student, a first-generation college-going student. Her dream is to attend UCSB and study marine biology, and her plan is to be a marine biologist. And here is what she had to say about the program. Boys and Girls Club's Future Grad program helped open new opportunities for me and helped reassure me that I shouldn't be anxious to apply to colleges. It also helped me understand the steps I need to take to get into UCSB. I will be the first in my family to go to college with my college degree. I can support my family and also help understand and improve the environment. So Emmy is someone who has a very similar story to mine. We're both first-generation and our parents immigrated from Vietnam to escape the war. And for her, she talks a lot about being really proud of having immigrant parents and also the opportunities to go to college. And so for her, not only is she excited about the opportunity to get higher education, but to also make her family proud and looking forward to provide that support as, you know, immigrant parents have sacrificed a lot for our students. She is really dedicated and excited to have this type of support so that she can continue college and persist to get her degree. And next slide, please. And here is another student, Joyree. She is also a first-generation college-going student and her dream is to attend San Jose State University as a sociology major and hopefully apply for a master's program to be a social worker. And here is what she said. The Boys and Girls Club Future Grads program has helped me envision my future in college. They provided me with a clearer picture of what college life is like. I initially was worried about the college application process, but since joining Future Grads, I have a much better understanding of it. The program has alleviated my concerns about the future, especially since I don't know anyone who has attended college in the U.S. I'm grateful for the opportunity to be in Future Grads and I aspire to help others in my future career. So getting to know Joyree has really been a joy. And it's been really great to see the transformative process and seeing her thought. Joyree didn't really see herself going to college. She even told me, like, some of her family members told her to not go to college and it's not really worth her time. And Joyree went to all the colleges that we provided and one of the schools that really shopped out to her was San Jose State University. And there was a really amazing pivotal moment where she looked at me and said, I see myself here. And that was a really amazing moment that Joyree shared with me because as someone who was like, you know, I don't really think about college. I don't know if it's right for me. I don't know if I can even go. But to her to look at me and say, this is a place that I feel like I belong, really is a transformative moment. And we really do hope to continue that and to provide more opportunities for our students to have pivotal moments like these and accessibility and knowing that they can do it. And we are a program that really supports our students and really believe in persistence and getting the students there. Next slide, please. And then just really finally, we really appreciate the partnership that you all have with us with the Boys and Girls Club of Silicon Valley. And we really look forward to continue to build our Future Grads community. And thank you all.
Thank you for your report. Board, do you have any questions?
I have one question. Can you, of the 75 students that currently are enrolled, can you give me kind of a breakdown of, you know, how many girls versus boys? What kind of areas are they interested in? Is it all over or kind of give me a feel for?
Are you making, or she's young. Are you making a request that when we have Future Grad presentations on top of the information that she's about to share, that she gives you a breakdown of the data?
I think that would be useful in the future as well.
Yes.
Yeah, definitely. We just moved into a new system. So we are currently enrolling, but we do have a mix of students and also career interests as well. I would say in the past couple of months, we got into and providing program at Milpitas High School Extension at Innovation Campus. I would say there are a lot more boys there. But we do have a large girl population that is Milpitas High School. But we do have a range of mix. So I will make sure that in our next report, we'll make sure to have the data and specific information that you are requesting.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you so much for the presentation. It's apparent that you love working with students and kids and inspiring them. I do have to ask, as far as this partnership, how is this funded?
Yeah, so Mark unfortunately is the one who is not here. He's the one who understands a little bit more about our funding. But I believe our funding is through private funders. And so that's something that I can follow up with a little bit more since he has a little bit more information about that.
Thank you. I guess similar to trustee Young's question, I think in the future presentations, that would be helpful to include that in the data set.
Absolutely. Thank you for your feedback.
And just to follow up on that, trustee No. So there is no monetary cost to the district. Our cost is shared space and then also whatever time it is that our counselor takes to connect kids with Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you. I think again, as a presentation, it'd be good to frame it in the beginning.
Thank you.
And then also for the qualifications, she said was mostly for first generations. I was wondering, is there like an income or GPA or what's like the application process? You know, let's say like the 75 students are full. How do you guys select the students to be part of the program?
Yeah, so we are looking for specifically first generation, but we also don't turn anyone down. So there's no income eligibility. There's no GP eligibility. If they're interested or want to know about their future or want to learn how to get there, that's all we really require. In order to get into the program, we do have a registration form that has our parent guardian information and some like demographics that we're requiring. But it's a pretty simple application for them to be enrolled into Future Grads. So there is no really qualification as long as they're interested and want to get some support with their future.
And then the four-day academy course, is that like a full day or half day?
Yeah, they're full days. They are from 8:30 to 4:00. I'm also six months into this position, so there's a lot that happens this later semester that I'm still learning about. So if there is anything you would want to follow up, I could definitely follow up with you more in detail about like Summer Academy and other things that I mentioned today.
Thank you.
And thank you for the presentation again. It's a great opportunity for students to be able to learn the life skills and the engagement for them. I was wondering, you know, what exactly are the corporate field trips as opposed to college field trips? What's the difference?
Yeah, so we have various partnerships. So like Service Now, Bill. We have some other ones right now that we're building that partnership with. We want to explore also with different career interests that we want to build that with. So ones that we know right now based off of my partnership and we're actually going to have Summer Academy as Service Now. So we recently had one where students were able to visit Bill and actually get a career panel and they were able to learn about the different careers at Bill and get a tour of it. So students, even myself, was quite amazed to see the things that they have. And so it was a really great opportunity. So we want to build more partnerships with different corporate. I mean, we're in Silicon Valley, right? And, you know, get more opportunities outside of corporate and, you know, different types of tours that we can provide for our students and their interest.
And if they're really interested in a certain field probably after this, like what are the next steps? Do you have any specific guidance for them?
In terms of different career interests? Yeah, so with them, we'll talk about, you know, very opportunities that like internships and volunteers might even connect them with maybe a corporate partner that we have or someone that knows somebody that they can do an informational interview with. So various things that we can do to support our students at our interest. But if we have, for example, a lot of our students are interested in engineering, really finding someone who knows some connect and providing a career panel. I know that we had in Morgan Hill a career panel for Pixar. So a lot of students were into animation. So that's something that as long as we are able to hear the needs of it, we can, that's something that we can definitely create.
Great, that's wonderful. Yeah, any community hours or, you know, anything relates to, you know, the number of hours that they are able to participate in the community to be able to give back, any presidential awards, anything like that that you're planning to going forward, the future plans?
For volunteer? So we recently just had one with our partner partnerships, ASML. And so they're doing like a food bank kind of drive. And our students are wanting to participate in that and to, you know, get their volunteer hours here at Milpitas High School. So that is just very some of the few that we're having some of the opportunities. But I would love to kind of build more of that as I know part of the graduation requirement is community service. And we want to make sure that we're building those skills for our students, not just in the classroom through our lessons, but outside as well and building those skills. So that is something definitely that we want to look into a lot more closely and hearing from the students themselves of what kind of volunteer opportunities they're looking for.
I mean, in the presentation, I could see a few of the pictures wherein, you know, I saw some of the Boy Scouts who are pursuing their Eagle Awards. They have there and there who participated. That was reason of that. Thank you for it.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you, trustee Naka. Any questions from Cabinet?
I have one additional question. In regards to the first-generation students, do you provide any guidance as far as financial literacy or how to fund their college path?
Yeah, so right now, we have a lot of our 10th-grade students. So a lot of what we're learning is the college systems, learning how to network, also learning how, we have an activity that's kind of the game of life. And so we have scenarios where we have a student that has a high school degree and has a specific career and then we have someone else with like a four-year type of degree. And so we have students look into their different lifestyles. So do they want a car? Do they want a house? And they kind of play that game of life a little bit. But that's our first introduction. But we definitely talk a little bit more towards 11th grade about financial literacy, how to apply financial aid and how to fund their schooling to the best of their ability and understanding what it means to get a loan, what it means to have these grants, what are the different scholarships that you can apply to and get access, how to be competitive applicant. So 10th grade is really about building that foundation of just what is college? What does it mean to have A's through G's? And then we build more up on that later and get more into details about that towards 11th and then definitely towards 12th. So we just kind of lay the foundation a little bit more during 10th and then build more and go into detail.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, trustees, for your comments and showing the community and the district how much you care about the future of the graduates or the high school students and their pathways. We really appreciate your presentation and we look forward to continue to work together.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, I was reviewing the MOU from last spring. So I just have a question about the provision regarding the access to student data. So maybe in the next, oh.
I can just answer that. That's just so they have access to the students' addresses and contact information.
Even though it says other things, that's all?
That's the main reason, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Item 22, action item. Item 22A, I approve the district's 2024-2025 transportation plan.
So the 24-25 transportation plan is due to the state on April 1st, 2025, and it serves a unique purpose because it addresses the transportation services for identified pupils in the 24-25 school year. To qualify for the state transportation reimbursement, we must submit a plan and identify all the services we provide. Our total transportation expenses is about 1.5 million and the state will provide 60% reimbursement. We're already getting the 40% through LCFF add-on revenue. And so when we submit this plan, we will be qualified for 60% reimbursement of our total transportation costs. So we are seeking the board to approve this transportation plan.
Your motion.
Motion to approve the transportation plan.
We have a motion to approve the transportation plans. Your second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining, seeing none? Motion carries.
Thank you, board.
You're welcome. Item 22A, II, approve Swinton's change order numbers.
I don't think Travis needs introduction.
Prove Swinton's change order is number 400, I mean, number six for the MHS Performing Arts Theater Project.
Yes, sir. Good evening, members of the board. Thank you so much for coming out to tour the facility yesterday. It's really exciting to have you all out there. A big thank you to Kayla and Emily for bringing the kids out there to do a little performance for you. I thought that was really cool. Kids were super excited about it. So we're back with a batch of change orders. You recall, it at least leaseback project delivery method, all the allowances and contingencies are built into the GMP and the contract in a low bid situation. That's not the case. So we come before you, prepare a list for you as to what change orders have been exacted since the last time and the reason for those change orders, a little narrative of those change orders for any questions you may have to ratify those as such. With me tonight also again is Angie Wu of Swinton. She's a project executive for them. If you have any questions of her. Her and her team have done a really good job working with us to eliminate a lot of these potential change orders. Some of them come to us as PCI's, potential change orders. About half of those have just gone away either by working with the subs or saying- About half of those have just gone away either by working with the subs or saying, hey, this isn't warranted, or maybe we found a better way to do it to just not incur that cost. So when you see the numbers on the change orders, you may see, you know, 351 and then 359 and then 362. Those ones in between typically have been mitigated and have gone away at no cost. So her team has done a good job working with our team and with the architectural team to try to mitigate these as best as possible. Saw yesterday it's a pretty complex project, but it's going well. Right now with tonight's, should the board approve these change orders, we're at about four point, exactly 4.03% the base cost of the project in change orders.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion?
I thought we capped it at five. I think we would get additional. I'm just.
Just, just because I don't remember.
So this is our discussion.
Yeah, I know. Just so that I don't remember. How much was our cap that we put in? You remember?
Yes, Travis, could you share the cap amount? There wasn't a cap, but the.
There wasn't a cap. They did set aside $2 million. Initially, there was a $2 million set aside when Wendy Zhang was here to accommodate change orders. We will likely go over that.
I'm sorry?
We will likely go over that by a little bit. Yeah.
Like, how much is a little bit?
Well, let's see, 2 million would be five, a little under 5%. So we're at 4.03. And then that one I keep bringing up, we got a big one. It started out about 530,000. I think we're into 300s now. We keep pushing back on that one. That's probably where I'll be at the, here at the next meeting to present that to you. So we'll probably be pretty close to that 2 million by May.
Okay, using that number.
Sure.
By May, how much more is, I don't know how to explain this, or how much more is left in the project that could be risk of change orders, I guess?
As you saw yesterday, Building B, the classroom building, is nearly done and they're painting, dropping ceiling tiles. So we're very, very close in that area. So I don't anticipate much there. There's not much to worry about on the site work. See inside, we're about to fly a bunch of steel trusses over spring break, which if you have a chance to come over and check that out, it's pretty cool, the huge crane. And then there's cat locks, there's rigging, there's some real specialty items in the rest of that building. So I couldn't really put a number to it. I would say that everyone on all three teams is making every effort to mitigate costs as best as possible.
Okay.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none? Motion carries. Item 22AII, approve blocks agreement for pre-construction services and allowance for Innovation Campus Phase Three.
Yes, thank you. For Innovation Campus Phase Three, the project delivery method for this is lease leaseback like we did for Phases One and Two. The district submitted an RFP out to the four qualified lease leaseback contractors for the district. They've been long qualified, which was Lathrop, Overa, Excel, and Block. We received two responses, Excel and Block. A committee was formed of five school employees. Interviews were held, presentations were given by both companies. TBK facilitated that conversation and those interviews as a non-voting, we don't vote, we just facilitate the conversation. At the end of that, there was much dialogue and the committee felt that Block Construction, given their knowledge of the site, their performance on Phase One and Two, overall interview presentation was good. And so they selected unanimously Block Construction as the preferred contractor to enter into a pre-construction agreement. Maybe remind you a little bit how the lease leaseback works. Lease leaseback, the, some of the benefits are you can pick your contractor on best value, right? It's not just a little bidder. As much as we're very fortunate to get Swinton and Angie over here on the low bid, we've been very fortunate to have Block on these lease leaseback contracts. And so the way that works is you come in and they tell you what their fees are and how they, you know, what our operating expenses are, what their markups are on subcontractors, what their markups are on change order work, all those sorts of things, a means of determining cost. And they say for pre-construction, we're going to help you do estimates, we're going to find value engineering ways to reduce costs in construction, work with the architect. Those are all pre-construction things and that's where you see the 80 something thousand for that, for those efforts, right? And then the other element of pre-construction is you just need a long lead item, something, especially since the pandemic, a switchgear, those sorts of things are still really long lead item. And we have a piece of switchgear in Building 900. It's, it's gotta be from the pyramids time. It's, it's old. And in fact, PGE blew a transformer during Phase Two and we thought it was our gear, but it wasn't. And then when PGE threw their, put the new transformer and threw it back on, it blew a fuse in this old thing and Block helped us get in there and replace it. We found the district had an old, old fuse. This thing's ancient. So when you see these pre-construction long lead items, that's what those are. So we can get out in front of that, have that ordered, have it coming, have it manufactured, have it coming while they're building. And then you don't just get done and say, well, we got to wait another 30 weeks for a panel to get here. So that's what you see in pre-construction. Then from there, what happens, the plans get approved or nearly approved by DSA. Block will reach out to all of their subcontractors and advertise out and say, we need subcontractor bids on all of these trades. So as part of pre-construction, they put together bid packages and they're very, very detailed, okay, who's doing what? And they try to eliminate any scope gaps within the trades. And so they do that, they put it out to bid, they get the bids, lease leaseback is an open book. They have to put them all in a binder. We can look at them and say, what were your bids on electrical? Okay, you have five people that bid on electrical. We selected this person for this reason. And so that's the process and that's the GMP. That's where we would come back with an amendment to tonight's agreement. So this would be a pre-construction agreement that includes a site lease and a facility lease like a typical lease leaseback. And then we'd come back with a guaranteed maximum price, which includes all those bid numbers, allowances, contingencies, anything that would cover unforeseen conditions, errors and omissions, any district requested adds. So you would have all those contingencies built into that guaranteed maximum price.
Thank you. It's got, are there any public comments?
We have no public comment at this time.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion?
One question.
Yes, sir.
So there's a lot of news. I mean, there's a lot of talk about various tariffs and that's going back and all these supplies are I'm sure not coming from the US. Do you have any insight as to how much that might affect the bidding?
I think that it, and we do have two folks from Block here tonight.
Oh, okay.
Introduce them, Brad Fan and Nick Wilcock. Brad Fan is a project executive at Block and Nick was instrumental in Phase One and Phase Two as a project manager. We don't have any real detailed insights because my opinion on the tariffs, it's, we're going to do a tariff. Well, we might not. We're going to do a tariff. We might not. So it's, it's really mixed signals from the federal government at this time. So it's really hard to try to calculate that. So I don't have a really good answer for you until something's set in stone on what's going to happen. And I would say there are a few elements that may come from outside the country, but maybe, maybe quite a few are just right here.
Okay.
And this one isn't quite as complex and massive as Phase One and Phase Two. There are a lot of structural steel on those.
Right, yeah. I'm just concerned about the variability in terms of the bid, if it's going back and forth. How do you lock down a number, right?
Yeah, and that's, and that's where these allowances come in because we could come back with a GMP and say, we have a, any allowance that's unused comes back to the district, right? So we could come in and say, well, we're going to do $500,000 allowance for tariff implications, right? And then, and if we need it, we use it. If not, we, it goes back to the district.
I guess this question's not for Travis, but maybe for Dorothy. Does Phase Three, is Phase Three eligible for state bond matching funds or was that already submitted previously?
I guess we can.
So it won't be eligible until it's built. However, we did apply and we are in line for a little over, right around $9 million in matching bonds as a result of the Mattos work. So we've applied for that.
Okay, thank you.
I would say one other pot of money that we're just scratching the surface, maybe the district isn't as up to speed because we're still asking the questions on our end. And we did this over at Fremont High School District, a seismic mitigation. So the old theater is not seismically sound. So if we were to renovate that, it would cost a ton of money. And so there are, there are pots of money within the statewide bond program that allow for seismic funding if you're going to mitigate that. In our case, we mitigate it by removing the building. And so we'll make every effort to seek those funds.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's Office, 22BII, conduct second reading and adopt the proposed board policy 1313 on civility.
Scott, would you please put it on the screen for public reading? Thank you, everybody. Do you want him to just scroll up slowly?
Yep, just scroll up slowly, Scott. That'd be great. Scott, are there any, are there any public comments on the?
David, I'll have to look. No public comments. And then actually, this is the entire policy right here. The rest is just the.
The references.
Right, understood. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion to, to adopt the proposed board policy 1313 on civility. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none? Motion carries. Item Superintendent's Office, BII, adopt resolution 2025-37, recognizing and honoring March 31st as Cesar. Except, what? Go ahead, you say it.
I was gonna say Caesar. Is it Caesar?
Caesar.
Okay.
Caesar.
You're right, I didn't practice before I got here. E Chavez Day for Service and Learning is.
So for this resolution, I was actually right here at Randall World Languages School and had some students partake in it and they did it in a, they did it bilingual. So it was pretty cool and we'll check it out right now.
Resolutions 2025.37, recognition and honoring March 31st as Cesar E Chavez Day of Service and Learning. Por cuanto, elijo de trabajadores migrantes agricultores, César E. Chávez centro de la, de la opresión de los trabajadores del campo de primera mano y dirigió sus metas y aspiraciones de vida hacia la educación de sus compañeros trabajadores agricultores para que comprendieran sus derechos de tener un lugar de trabajo seguro y un salario justo. Y por cuanto, en 1961, César E. Chávez confundó el sindicado de los trabajadores agricultores United Farm Workers Union para imponer las malas condiciones de trabajadores, de los trabajadores del campo y lo, y lo logró en empezar a los, al organización, el primer sindicato y así quería contratos labores de los trabajadores agricultores en los campos de uva. Y where's, for more than three decades, Cesar E. Chavez led this groundbreaking organization by affecting social change through peaceful tactics such as fast boycott strikes and pilgrimages. His union's effort influenced and inspires millions of Americans for gay and diverse national coalition of students, middle-class consumers, religious groups, and minorities in the hard-working struggle to achieve fair wages, medical coverage, pension benefits, human living conditions, and perhaps most important dignity and respect for the hundreds of thousands of farm workers across the country. And where Cesar E. Chavez said, "Real education should consist of drawing the goodness and the best of all, out of our own students." What better book can there be than a book of humanity? And. Por cuanto fue creado el día de servicio y aprendizaje de Cesar Chavez para los niños de las escuelas públicas, que así promover el servicio a las comunidades de California en honor a la vida y obra de Cesar Chavez. Y por cuanto incluso después de su muerte, en 1993, su mensaje de no violencia, unidad y justicia para todas las personas continúa hoy. Y. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Mopitas Unified School District that March 31st is designated as Cesar E. Chavez Day of Service and Learning. Passed and adopted by the Mopitas Unified School District Board of Education at a meeting held on March 25th, 2025 by the following vote.
For Randall World Language School, let's honor Cesar Chavez.
Awesome.
By the Mopitas Unified School District Board of Education at a meeting held on March 25th, 2025 by the following vote.
For Randall World Language School, let's honor Cesar Chavez. Cesar Puey.
Cesar Puey. Awesome. Scott, are there any public comments?
I have no public comments at this time.
Is there a motion?
I move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none? Cesar Puey, recognizing, honoring March 31st. Item 23, consent items. Consent items are considered routine and will be acted upon by the board in one motion. There is no discussion on these items prior to the motion unless members of the board, staff, or public request that specific items be tabled or removed for discussion or correction. Are there any items to be tabled or removed? Are there any public comments?
We have no public comment at this time.
Sir, a motion?
Make a motion.
We have a motion to adopt for consent items. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none? Motion carries on the consent items. Data future board meetings. April 2nd, special board meeting, in-person only, 10:15 a.m. at the MUSD Innovation Campus. April 22nd, tentative study session 5 p.m., tentative closed session 6 p.m., open session 7 p.m., hybrid on Zoom, YouTube, Randall World Language School, Excel. Any additional announcements or reminders?
Yes, President Norwood. The Mopitas Community Education Foundation would like to remind all seniors of high school that there are $17,000 worth of scholarships that is due by the Sunday, which I don't remember, at the end of spring break. So all applications for those scholarships must be completed at that time.
How are you? Good, well, I'll talk to you offline.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments or announcements?
Monday, March 31st is Cesar Chavez Day and district office and schools are closed.
Thank you.
President Norwood, go ahead.
The Mopitas National Little League rescheduled their opening day to this Saturday at 8 a.m. at the Mopita Sports Center.
Little League opens, okay.
All right.
And we do have the STEAM showcase coming up on April 5th.
Right. Okay, I'll just invite it. Right. All guys invited?
Okay, awesome. Is there a motion?
Actually, one more, sorry. I was reminded that the Mopitas Community Education Foundation's annual dinner is the 2nd of May and all invited.
Awesome.
Move to adjourn the meeting.
There's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?